Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Los Cattas Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, May 11th, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Badami?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Erickson as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Cattas strongly encourages participation in the public process. We welcome verbal and written comments. To speak on any item, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. Please be sure to turn the card into a staff member located to my right or jostling to my left. Matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. We have desk items this evening for items number two and items number three. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Yes. Item number two is a requested continuance, and I will be recusing myself from this item due to a perceived conflict of interest with one of the four appellants. Vice Chair Kane will be taking over, and I will return for the subcommittee reports.
I was getting my history report already. This is Architecture and Site Application S-15077, 19 Highland Avenue. The matter was to be continued to a date certain, however, I have a desk item wherein there's a conflict of the party's availability to attend the date that was determined. Jill, you want to clarify? We have a binary decision before us, and we'll go with an informal procedure?
We will. So anyone who wishes to speak on this item, I would suggest we give them three minutes, and that will also offer the opportunity to the commission to ask questions. I believe representatives of both the appellants and the applicant are here this evening. As you read in your desk item, some of the appellants are unable to make the May 25th meeting, which was the original intended date to be continued to, and the applicant has also stated that his architect will not be able to be at the next meeting, which would be June 8th. So ultimately, the Planning Commission will need to make a decision on which date the item should be continued to, and then we'll move on from there.
That's all we're deciding tonight, is the date on which the matter will be heard. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes can speak on this matter. I will need a speaker card in advance of that. I have two. Didi Smullen? What did we decide, three minutes? You have three minutes to address the commission.
I'm Didi Smullen, and I am representing Roger and Mercy Smullen, as well as all four appellants for this project. We were not consulted about the date, and unfortunately, most of us, three of the four appellants, are not available on the 25th. We were available today, but we would like to continue it to June or even further on, whatever's convenient for the applicant, but the 25th simply will not work for us. And we've been struggling to be heard on this project before the Development Review Committee. We were informed that the decision was made before we were able to speak. We'd like to be able to speak to this application and in a public hearing with our full complement of appellants available.
Let me clarify. You're saying you were not, and the other members of the appellant group were not made aware of this date, this date certain?
We were made aware when we received a notice of the meeting.
Then you were aware?
When we received a written notice that there would be a continuance, that's when we were made aware.
Thank you.
We were not notified of this meeting on the 11th, and we were, they threw out a couple of dates, the 11th and the 25th. So we made ourselves available for the 11th. We are not available for the 25th.
All right, thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hudes?
Did you, as a representative of the appellants, request a continuance from May 25th?
We, well, it hasn't yet been continued to May 25th, so we would like it to be on a different date, yes.
You requested a continuance to May 25th originally?
No, we did not.
You request any continuance on the matter?
No, we did not.
Okay.
We just can't make that 25th date.
Other questions?
We were told that it was the staff's decision to continue it because of the lack of commissioners available for this meeting.
Commissioner, question?
So I heard that you wanted to continue it to some date past May 25th. Is there a date that you're fairly certain that all of the appellants could attend?
We weren't really given enough time, but it sounds like the 8th is fine, but then we were told that the applicant is not available on that date. We haven't been given any other dates, so we haven't had a chance to-
To confer about it.
To confirm or not confirm. For me, I can make myself available, but-
But you can't speak for the others?
I need advanced notice, and we need at least, you know, a month's notice to arrange our schedules so that-
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson, anything else? No. Seeing no other questions, thank you. I have a card from Bess Weisman.
Good evening, commissioners, staff. Do you know where Marnie is? Is she going to be here?
She will not be here.
She will not? Okay. I am Ed Pearson's architect for 19 Highland Avenue. We were also originally, I do believe, calendared for the 12th or the 11th, I guess, today. But as there was additional information requested to happen at our DRC Tech review in order to satisfy some of the concerns of the appellant, that documentation from peer reviews for biological surveys, Arboris reports, et cetera, wasn't available until today. I do believe that's part of why staff asked to continue it and selected the date of the 25th. I know there was also a little bit of concern about the number of potential commissioners that were going to be here. We knew that Commissioner Badami was going to have to accuse herself. She's the sister of one of the appellants as part of this group of appellants. The 25th is a really important date to us. We have a lot of people that are scheduled for that particular date. Richard Gesner of Monarch Consulting Arboris, Chris Hundamir of C2 Earth Geotechnology, Ginger Bolin of HT Harvey Ecological Consulting, Vellimir Suluk of Peoples Associates, Bart Heckman, the Land Use Attorney, and myself. This application has been prepared and approved by Tech Review. I don't believe there's really any logical reason to kind of put it past the 25th, especially as in all forums that we've had public or otherwise the DRC, meetings with the planner, et cetera, there's been extensive questions around a lot of the professional reports that have been prepared. Not only the original professional reports, but the peer review professional reports, and then the professional reports that were also requested and paid for by my client in order to back up everything that's been already approved. Also, I'm not really sure that continuing it does anything for my client or the nature of the project either, because we were told at a meeting on Saturday with the appellant that we, you know, we wanted to have so we could try to actually avoid the 25th Planning Commission. Unfortunately, the majority of the group of the appellants chose not to show up to that meeting that had been arranged. And then also, it was stated that no matter what happened at this meeting, that it would be requested to be continued above Planning Commission and to Town Council. So I think it's in the best interest of my client, especially because, you know, more time goes by and it's harder to do construction as we enter potential future rainy season to stop the delay, to allow the time to happen when the professionals are all scheduled, and to put this to rest once and for all.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you again. I'm going to close the public hearing and turn to my commissioners for discussion or motion, but first, I'd like to ask a question. Mr. Paulson, in the staff report that we received for this hearing, the original, it says, and the remarks, "Staff, the applicant, and the appellant request the item be continued to May 25th." Does that mean exactly what it says? I mean, who made that request if they didn't receive the notice?
Ms. Mosley is not here this evening, so I'll have to get confirmation of that, and whatever meeting this gets continued to, we'll provide that information.
Thank you. Discussion, commission? Commissioner?
I appreciate the comments from the appellant as well as the applicant. Since this is an appeal, my feeling is that this should be continued to a date where, A, the applicants, you know, professionals can be in attendance, because that's an important component of this, and that also that the, at least a majority of the appellants could attend, as long as that isn't going to drag on for months. So, I mean, assuming it could be done before the end of June, that would be my thoughts.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Hudes?
A question for staff. Is there available time on the next Planning Commission? I guess it's June 22nd and July 13, July 27. Is there available agenda time for this matter?
There appears to be room on the June 22nd. I do not have the tentative schedule for the meetings in July.
I have a question. Could I reopen the public hearing to see how the proposed compromise of June 22 goes down, to see if that's acceptable?
If you want to reopen it and have both of the people who spoke before-
Check with both sides.
Check in, then that's fine. Obviously, you know, I'm not sure if the appellant has all of the other folks' calendars, and so that's something that will need to be addressed.
So I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Ms. Smullen, could you come to the podium, please? How does June 22 work for you, ma'am?
It works fine for me. I can arrange our schedule so that I can be here. I can't speak for the others, although it seemed to be that the 25th was the one that we had the biggest problem with.
Thank you.
So if there's enough notice now, I think that they should be able to be here.
Just seeking opinions, thank you. Ms. Weisman, do you want to return? Or Cindy McCormick?
I live at 239 Thurston. I'm the applicant's fiancee. I just, since the planner's not here this evening, I just wanted to point out something that you may not have noticed. So on the third page of the desk item, at the bottom, where it starts from Marnie, it says, "Sorry, Didi, I did not receive the first email. We spoke about the dates when we met almost two weeks ago. Obviously, the planner's not here this evening to address that, but I did want to bring it to your attention. Thank you."
What are you saying it says? That they knew about the date?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? And I have one other question. How does June 22 work for you?
It doesn't work.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other speakers? I have a card for you, Ms. Weisman.
I would just like to iterate that we have gone multiple rounds on this project. It has been properly noticed. We have a group of six professional people that have been called upon to make multiple reports about this project and peer review, and we all have critical mass on the 25th. We were able to get our group organized for that. I would really appreciate it if it really meant as much to the appellants' group that they would figure out how to do that and to come together.
I thank you for your comments. Why reopen the public hearing just to see if June 22 would work for you?
Well, I think that Ed feels it's too late, and so if I've got to change my calendar and we have to check in to see if the 8th works, I guess that's okay. What we know is the 25th works.
Thank you. Question. We have a question from Commissioner Erickson.
How does June 8th work? That's a month from now, so just-
I mean, I guess, I guess you can-
I need you to come through the microphone. None of your comments are being recorded. And give us your name, please.
Sorry, Ed Pearson, 239 Thurston Street. I could try, we could do the 8th. The only thing I'm not, I can't guarantee if any of the professionals, if all of them could make it, or if one could make it, or three could make it. So I would just have to take my chances if we did the 8th. Hopefully, all of them could make it, but I have to take my chances, maybe one or, you know, yeah, they are a group, and I'm just taking my chances, while all of them might not be able to be there at the same evening.
So we have an additional date proposed by Commissioner Erickson of June 8th? You say that's a possibility?
It's a possibility. I just might not have all the professionals that I need here to present my case, and if there's any questions, you know, regarding the project, they may not, you know, I can't say for sure, since I don't know. It could be one might not be here, it could be four might not be able to be here, but all of them have-
In all fairness to you, I need a yes or a no, so that you put forth your best case.
Question again?
Does June 8th work for you?
It would work.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner, wait, question. Commissioner Erickson?
So you would have available whatever reports all of those professionals are preparing in advance of that meeting?
They're already done. That's correct.
Okay, fine. So we would have, so, okay, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would have closed the public hearing, except for this additional information, so my question to you is binary. Is June 8th good or bad?
That is fine. I just wanted to address the last two people who-
I'm happy with that answer. Thank you very much.
Who accused me of something, so.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
No. I like everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because we did not know about the 25th.
We are closing the public hearing. Thank you. I look to my commissioners for discussion or motion.
I move this to June 8th, 2016, for a hearing at that time by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any objections with that staff on anything we don't know about?
No, we'll make that work.
I need a second? I have a second. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Aye. It carries four zero. And Ms. Badami, welcome back.
You did a good job there, Vice Chair Kane. All right. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on various town subcommittees. Do commissioners have any reports to share from recent committee meetings? Vice Chair Kane?
The Historic Preservation Committee met today. It was a special meeting. It's our first of two for the month, and we looked at cases on 135 Johnson Avenue. The applicant wanted to provide an addition to a historic house, and they were sent back to further develop their plans to be more consistent with the guidelines given to the Historic Preservation Committee. We met on 16982 Kennedy to request to remove historic property from the historic resources inventory, and that request was granted. We also discussed 112 Los Cattas Boulevard. An applicant was requesting to remove irreparable siding, historic siding, from historic property, and given the support for this request from the town's building official, the Historic Preservation Committee granted that request. And we also met on 125 Wheeler Avenue, request to remove property from historic resources inventory. We were able to make the five required findings, and the house was removed from the historic resources inventory. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kane. Moving on to verbal communications, at this time, we invite members of the audience to speak to us on any item that is not on the agenda. However, I do not have any speaker cards, so I'm going to assume that nobody wants to talk to us tonight. That's fine. We'll move to our consent items, and that's item number one, approval of minutes for April 27th of 2016. Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Erickson?
I move to adopt the consent calendar, which consists of the minutes of the meeting of April 27th of the Planning Commission of 2016, as distributed.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanson?
I can second the motion, and I should also disclose that while I was not able to attend the April 27th meeting, I watched the entirety of the meeting on the video, so I feel comfortable with seconding and voting on the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. And I also was not present during the hearing for item number eight, but I can attest to the minutes as I watched the hearing online. So I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Moving to public hearing, item number three, 22 South Santa Cruz Avenue, conditional use permit application U-16-003, requesting approval for a conditional use permit to operate group cooking classes, Cucina Bambini, with beer and wine service, and alternative use of parking on property zone C-2, APN 510-45-014. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Seeing none. Ms. Puga, I understand you're providing the staff report this evening?
That's correct. Good evening, commissioners. The applicant, Cucina Bambini, is requesting to operate group cooking classes with beer and wine service and alternating use of parking on property zone two. The applicant is proposing to merge two vacant ground floor spaces into one 1,475 square foot space. The applicant is requesting to operate from 10:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. The proposed floor plan includes a full kitchen with modular work tables and a flex space separate from the kitchen area for customers to partake in what are known as drop-in activities. The applicant is requesting a flexible class size that does not propose a maximum cap on the number of students and instructors. This is due to the fact that not all scheduled cooking classes may be at capacity, in which the drop-in space would be available. The existing commercial building provides four parking spaces on-site and has credit for 16 parking spaces in the Parking Assessment District. The applicant has entered into a parking agreement with the landlord for six additional parking space credits, Monday through Friday after 5:30 p.m., and all day Saturday and Sunday. Given the proposed parking agreement, the applicant is requesting approval to increase the number of students and instructors after 5:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and from 10:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. The applicant is also proposing beer and wine service during cooking classes and private events. The Town of Los Cattas alcoholic beverage policy requires any new service of alcoholic beverages to be reviewed by the Planning Commission with a recommendation to the Town Council. The applicant is also proposing beer and wine service for the drop-in activities. As described in the project description included as Exhibit 4, activities would include cupcake making and decorating. As defined by General Policy Number 7 of the alcoholic beverage policy, these activities would not be considered a meal. Staff has recommended conditions of approval regarding the shared parking agreement, operating hours, and alcohol service. The proposed use is in conformance with the Town Code and consistent with the general plan. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission condition the maximum number of students and instructors allowed at one time, as well as condition that no alcohol service shall be permitted in the drop-in space, and forward a recommendation of approval to the Town Council for the proposed project. There is also a desk item before you this evening, which contains two public comments that were received after the distribution of the staff report. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puga. Do we have questions of Ms. Puga? Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, thank you. And you say that the staff is recommending to set a maximum number of students. What is that number?
So working with the applicant, originally, staff came up with a maximum of 16 students and two instructors, Monday through Friday, after 5:30, or I'm sorry, pardon me, Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:30, and with the additional parking based on the shared parking agreement, that would increase to 31 students and three instructors.
Follow-up to that. Are there any other businesses that have a complex parking arrangement by time such as this one?
So there are two group uses in the downtown. One in particular does use this alternate parking, and they also do have a shared parking agreement with the office use in the same building, so it's a similar scenario.
And do they have hours, different maximums at different hours?
That's correct. So it's after the office use, so it's 5:30 p.m.
Okay. I had some other questions, but they're on different aspects.
All right. Commissioner Hanson, you add your hand up.
I had a couple of questions. One was, I know that the CUP goes with the site, so supposing that the proposed use of cooking class with beer and wine service didn't succeed, the permitted use, only a permitted use allowed subsequent to that without a new CUP would be a cooking, a company that owns, that offers cooking classes, not any other kind of class?
So if the use were to leave the space, the CUP does run with the land, if another cooking space wanted to come in, they would have to operate under the same conditions of approval in order to use that space. Otherwise, they would need to come back to Planning Commission to modify the conditional use permit.
And it would have to be a cooking class, not some other kind of class?
Yes, the same use.
Okay. So then, kind of a follow-up to that, there's a mention of four parking spaces on-site. Are those the ones that are directly behind the building?
That's correct.
Okay. And one of those I noted was a wheelchair, you know, or handicapped space. And then, I know Sierra La Tab also offers cooking classes. I just wanted to confirm, they do not, to my knowledge, offer alcohol, but that's not a primary part of their business to do the classes. But do we have any experience with that in terms of how it's infected parking? Because a regular retail establishment would fall under, you know, a certain ratio of parking to, you know, people that might be in the store, whereas we've been learning with some of these classes that they tend to have higher needs for parking because of the need for all the people to be there at one time. So I didn't know if we had any knowledge of how it's worked out with others that have offered cooking classes, and since Sierra La Tab is just a couple of blocks away, I wondered about them.
Sure. So Sierra La Tab does have a conditional use permit for their cooking classes, and you're correct, it does not include beer or wine. As of date, we have no violations with regards to complaints of parking for the use, so I don't have any background knowledge with regards to that question.
But we haven't heard any vocal complaints about it?
There have been none that have been filed with a code compliance officer.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Vice Chair Kane?
Thank you for your report. I'm looking at the town's alcohol policy, and a number of questions come up. I'm wondering, we strongly discourage, a nice way of putting it, new applications for standalone bars or restaurants with separate bars. I'm looking at the policy on a, where do we have alcohol where it is not a restaurant? I'll put it another way, are we considering this establishment a restaurant?
We are not considering this establishment a restaurant, no.
Along with that, a wine bar is not considered a restaurant?
That's correct. It's not.
Does our alcohol policy provide for establishments that are not restaurants, serving beer and wine?
It does not. So it does not speak to this particular use. So it does not speak to this particular use, which is what somewhat of a hybrid use. But it does speak to serving meals with alcohol. And so that's where staff has pulled that interpretation from.
So we'd be arbitrarily opening up the alcohol policy to another corridor of use since we currently don't have one of that nature. Is that correct?
That is correct. So I'll speak to that. Obviously, as was mentioned before, you know, many wine bars have been approved that don't fit into this policy, but this is the closest policy to address alcohol service. And so that's why staff has chosen to use that. If you have concerns, then you can make that part of your recommendation as we move forward.
As I read the resolution, yes, I do. Because that's, alcohol beverages are not regulated. We want to balance the regulation, and we're opening a corridor for a non-restaurant to be serving beer and wine. So I'll bring that up later. I have another question, if I may.
Of course, Vice Chair Kane.
The parking, there's only four spots there, right?
There's four parking spaces that are on-site, but they have 16 parking spaces in the Parking Assessment District.
Where are the other 16 spots?
They're in the Parking Assessment District.
So that's the old policy of, they're out there somewhere. And we could have up to 31 students and three instructors.
That's correct. So many of these downtown uses don't provide on-site parking, and so they bought it into the Parking Assessment District to do so.
I appreciate the Parking Assessment District, but you know, I'm very concrete. And I see 31 people inside the store leaving. I see 31 people outside the store waiting for a parking spot. And I see three parking spots available, which may have been taken by the instructors because they're dutiful and arrive early. You see what I'm seeing? I'm seeing, I'm seeing what a lot of people are objecting to, which is intensity and more traffic and no place to park. I have a question on the 5:30 provision to open up more parking. If the people who made that agreement, does this mean they have to leave? The staff, the whole function of that office has to leave the building at 5:30?
So that's correct. So the applicants can speak more to that as they worked with the landlord to make this determination. But it was that, yes, the office use that is on the second floor would vacate the space by 5:30 p.m.
I don't know any better, so I'm asking you. Is that a practical promise? Is that a business has to shut down at 5:30 to give up the parking spaces that aren't there? Does that work?
It can work, and it's what the landlord, who occupies that second floor, has agreed to.
All right, thank you.
All right. I believe we'll be hearing from the landlord tonight, too, if I can interpret these speaker cards correctly. Commissioner Hudes?
Two things. One, I assume that the existing businesses, when they were operating well, consumed some parking as well. Is it your belief that this new use incurs more parking?
The previous spaces were both retail. They were a laundromat and a flower shop. So they do have a different parking calculation for the downtown. Based on that, it's one per, probably one per 300 square feet. So without doing the math, I can't tell you exactly what the difference would be, but they would more than likely be similar in use.
And I'll just jump in as well. So that's where we start to determine how many parking spaces they have, which is a 7.33. And as we regulate group classes of any kind, we allow, we require one parking space for every instructor and one parking space for every three students. So for us, the parking is equal.
Okay. I had another question.
Okay, go ahead. And then I'll get to Commissioner Hanson next.
In the applicant's statement, they asserted that there have been no problems with the alcohol or any other issue in Willow Glen. Did staff independently verify that with the city of San Jose?
No, they did not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Actually, my question was exactly the same as Commissioner Hudes. This is about the, I think that's an important thing, and we'll want to hear more from the applicant, that there's already an existing location in Willow Glen, and there's experience with that. And maybe we don't have all the data from that, but I think that will be helpful in this.
All right. One more question from Vice Chair Kane, and then I'm going to suggest that we move on to hear from the applicant.
In the applicant's request, staff reports of the applicant's request, the applicant requested that there be no cap on the attendance, which seems a little difficult to grant. No cap on attendance when we're already, you know, we're going to discuss very tight parking. But it seems to me that there's an internal cap, and that's limited by the parking. Is that correct?
That's correct. And so I'll try to clarify, and Ms. Puga can correct me or the applicant's can correct me when they come up. What the applicant's requesting is that they be permitted to have any combination of number of students and/or instructors that is supported by the parking that they will provide, whether that's Monday through Friday from 10:00 to 5:30, or after 5:30, Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday. If you look at Exhibit 5, there is a chart. And just so, for discussion purposes, the first line, if they only had one instructor, the parking would support 19 students. If they had five instructors, the parking would only allow seven students, and then everywhere in between, and likewise down below. And so they're asking for that flexibility.
Thank you. One more?
One more question.
The applicant has offered, and it seems a very good idea, that there be cooking classes for children. The applicant has also stated there would be a mom-and-dad night-out, date night, where the children could be left and mom and dad could have an evening on the town. That's an evening timeframe for children to be in this location. And I didn't see anything in the staff report about certification of personnel taking care of, I don't know, 10, 15 children in an evening setting when mom and dad are not around. Do we require that?
So we don't require that, and we don't have any specifications for that. But the applicant can speak further to that question. I know that they do similar scenarios in their Willow Glen location, and they can speak to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to recommend that we hear from the applicant. They've been waiting patiently. So thank you, Ms. Puga. We will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission. If you could please state your name when you reach the microphone, so I know which speaker card to attach you to.
My name's Rick Ballard.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks very much for this opportunity. And thank you, Puga, for the report. We, as was mentioned, we've been opened, Cucina Bambini, we opened in 2008. So we've been open for eight years. And all that time, in fact, before that time, we've been excited about the prospect of opening in Los Gatos. We're both from the area. And when we found our site in Willow Glen, we decided to open there. And since then, we've developed the method. It's very different. One, I'll get into showing the floor plan and kind of how we operate. But I wanted to point out that the business, it's much more than just cooking classes, what we operate. I mean, we've been compared to Sur La Tab because it's an obvious comparison. They do cooking classes as well. But really, we're, there's no place else that I know of like us that offers cooking for all ages. It's basically a fun place to come and cook. We have classes and events from age three all the way up through adults. But in fact, more than just classes, over half our business is private parties, events. On the weekends, one of the reasons we have more people coming is on the weekends, it's primarily children's birthday parties throughout the day. Our Willow Glen location has two separate kitchens. It's 2,100 square feet. So we can have parties in each different kitchen. The parking situation there, we can address parking. I know those questions will come up. I'll just say, one of the reasons we're actually excited about this particular location is because of the parking. We've looked in Los Gatos at several locations for the last two years straight. We've met with every member of Town Council and discussed everything. We're very extremely familiar with the regulations, which is why we've proposed that sort of sliding scale, so long as we're compliant with the regulations, which in all cases we would be. And I can address that. But just to give an idea, the types of parties and events, we do adult cooking classes, but also group dinner parties, corporate events, family, we do lots of family, like decade birthday parties, where families will come cook together. Okay? So alcohol, beer, we received our beer and wine Class 41 license. I think we've had it for a little over three years now at our current location. Never a single incident issue whatsoever. It's not in any way a bar. Someone doesn't just come in and order a glass of wine or a bottle of wine. As someone pointed out in those letters, there's plenty of spaces in Los Gatos where someone can go get a drink. It's not our place. We have found that offering beer and wine service during our adult events makes them, it allows us to do many more types of events, more culinary experience events, where food and wine pairing, for example, or corporate events where people may want to have different sorts of wines. We can work with local wineries, like Savanna Chanel is one of our partners. We serve their wine. We can have events. We, in Willow Glen, we've worked with local restaurants where a chef will come and have all of his local, have his loyal customers come. He'll come at our place, and he'll teach a class at our place and bring his customers in. And of course, they want to have wine with dinner, or they want to learn about pairing food with wine. So it's an intricate part of the business. And we are not, we're not a, we have retail component, but we're not primarily a retail site. Like, for example, again, I heard the comparison of Sur La Tab. We're very different. Sur La Tab does not offer beer and wine, but they have a full retail establishment. One thing I will say is beer and wine is essential to our business. So when that question comes up, the answer is yes. And the reason is, we found when we first got our license, while it only makes up about maybe 2.5% of our total revenue, beer and wine service, the moment we got it, we were able to start doing corporate events, adult dinner parties, family gatherings, Kwanis Club events, all those sorts of things, where we wouldn't have before. People wouldn't want to come because they didn't have that kind of rich culinary experience. It's pretty hard to separate the two. Our business increased by at least 30% because we can offer beer and wine. So it's essential to our business. So I can, it might help a little bit to give a little bit of an overview of the space, the floor plan. Just the same floor plan that's on the wall back there. Maybe a little easier to see. The main kitchen right here, just don't worry.
Excuse me. You may want to take the microphone with you.
Sorry.
And repeat some of that, because none of it was picked up. Thank you.
Okay. So, again, I'm sorry. This is the same floor plan that was submitted already to the commission, and it's on the wall over there. This is just easier to see. South Santa Cruz Avenue is right here. Broadway Avenue is over on the end, on this end down here, and the adjacent business here. This is our main kitchen, right here. And it's outfitted essentially as a, much like a high-end residential kitchen. So unlike some other cooking schools that you've been to or may have seen, it's not a, it's not a real commercial-type kitchen. It feels more like a home, a well-appointed home kitchen with the Viking ranges and the nice ovens and things like that. These work tables are shown here as an example for classes. These are actually modular work tables, stainless steel work tables. We can move them anywhere. And the beauty of our space is our ability to do lots of different kinds of events. It's, this is set up for a typical class right here, where you can see, you know, a number of, I think there's 18 seats here for a regular, this would be a regular kids' class or an adult class. Up in front, above the screen, there's a monitor where, you know, whoever's cooking up front, you can see what they're doing. This space here, which was described as a flex space, sometimes we use it, in our current location, it's a whole other kitchen. But in this location, sometimes we will actually use it to set up tables. So let's say we do a corporate event or adult dinner party. You're making pasta, or you're doing a Thai menu or something in the main kitchen. And then over here, we'll have a dining table all set up. So when you're finished, you can go sit and enjoy the meal, perhaps with wine, with the rest of your party. So to that point, and we can address it later, I wouldn't call this a drop-in area, and I wouldn't want to have a limitation that says that we can't have alcohol in this area because it is part of the overall kitchen. I would agree to a limitation, and we're totally fine, that if there are kids' activities that are, whether they're drop-in activities or a kids' class, we've never once had somebody request beer and wine, and we would never offer it. And we're fine having a policy or limitation that there's no alcohol for the kids' classes. And if it's someone, you know, it's only for people who are participating in the adult, in the adult classes. There may have been discussion, and I realize it's in the staff report, where it said that we're requesting alcohol service for the drop-in. And I think that came up because sometimes we may have, most of our events are either private parties or scheduled classes. But sometimes we want to have a drop-in pizza night where families can come in, they can make pizza and cupcakes from scratch. They make the dough, they make the sauce, and they can enjoy them there. That kind of a drop-in event, it seems to me, if a family wants to have wine with their dinner, they should be able to. It seems to me they're eating a full meal. But I mean, we're willing to discuss that, I suppose. So this, I think this gives you a general layout of the facility and the types of things we do. One of the reasons we really like this space is, especially this space, is it's also directly across from, from the park where there's the farmer's market. So that's exciting to us because we can help do the sourcing of the local ingredients and have, something we've done a little bit in Willow Glen, but it's not quite as convenient because their farmer's market's very far, and it's far from our place, is we can have farmer's market classes where people can come in. We go to the farmer's market together, pick out ingredients, then come back and cook. Whether it's a cooking challenge, one team against the other, kind of a chopped type of thing. So this space makes that available. And we'll talk more about the parking, but I would say we've been to this site, my wife and I, a dozen times just recently. I mean, I've lived here for 40 years. So we, I know downtown very well, and I can tell you, and I know you do, too, this area of town is by far the easiest to park anywhere. And the dozen times we've been to this site over the past six months or so, we've never once had to look for parking more than about 30 seconds. It's never been an issue in this part of town. For our car. I know we'll talk also about, I would say that our use is very different. At the kids' classes, the kids don't drive. Parents drop them off. The parties, people come together. I think the three-to-one is a very conservative ratio. I realize that for, you know, health clubs and nail salons and people, things like that, people come individually. But this is very different.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Are there questions for Mr. Ballard? Commissioner Erickson?
So, thank you for your presentation. I'll have some comments about the business because I'm actually familiar with your operation in San Jose. In the, however the conditions of approval are, assuming this gets approved at some point, the language used in students and instructors when discussing kind of limitations on the use. So in your mind, the people who are drop-ins, if you have a drop-in activity coming on, are they students? Assuming they're not instructors.
Yes, yes, students or, yes, they're students. On the table, the labels.
Okay, so, so, so if you were, okay, so, so if you were maxed out by the conditions of, the use conditions with classes that were going on, you wouldn't be operating, even if that space were sitting vacant? In other words, if you had the maximum number of students that was permitted in the, what was in the drawing, the main kitchen, and there wasn't anything going in, in the, what was showed as flex retail space, you would not have drop-ins going in there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for your presentation. I went on your website for your Willow Glen location, and I was looking at the calendar, so I was hoping maybe you could kind of clarify if I was seeing what I thought I was seeing. It looked to me like the, I think you alluded to this, that a big part of your business was the kids' parties, and then another big part was the private events. And then, to me, it looked like a lesser part of the business was the adult classes that were in private events. Would that be a fair statement?
I think that's a fair statement, because the, a lot of the adult activities are more the private events as opposed to just the adult classes.
Okay, so that's what I saw. So, so on this parking issue, you said you hadn't had any trouble finding parking spots. Have you tried to find a parking spot during the farmer's market on Sunday morning, or any time during the day on Saturday, especially during the summer here in downtown Los Cattos?
During the daytime, yes. During the farmer's market, no.
Okay. So that might be the cause of some concerns that my fellow commissioners have. I did notice on the schedule, just looking at what you had scheduled in your Willow Glen location, and it looked like there was back-to-back parties all day long on Saturday. So if a party is from eleven till one, and then the next party is from one to three, and that party's at like whatever capacity of, of, say, twenty or so, you know, people, what happens at the transition point? Because, you know, people are going to be coming in, leaving at one o'clock, and then they'll be coming in at one o'clock, so that's actually, could be twice as much if, on a busy day like Saturday. It looked like that's the day that you had the most events scheduled.
Yeah, no, I understand the question. The, remember, our location in Willow Glen has two kitchens, and so that allows us to actually have more parties. In the kitchen, there's never, there's always an hour break between the parties. It's impossible for us to clean up for one event and have the next event feel like they're having a fresh party. So there's always at least an hour break, as far as I can tell, between every, between every party, so it's not an issue. People, people clear out before the next event.
Okay, well, that would, that would make a big difference in terms of avoiding what I just said, which is kind of the double parking issue with the overlap. And I also noted, so, so maybe you could say, in what ways you think the scheduling might be different? I did notice, like, for example, all summer long, it looked like you had kids' classes, but they were primarily in the weekdays. So the parents, you mentioned that they drop them off, but, you know, if there's twenty kids in the class, the parents need to come drop them off, and then they need to come back and pick them up, and they're probably going to, I guess, leave the area until they come back and pick them up from the camp. Is that fair?
I don't know. If I drop my kids off, I'd want to spend the afternoon or a couple hours in Los Cattos and have lunch, or go get coffee. So I think that's, again, one of the beauties of this particular location. People can kind of do that in Willow Glen where we are, but they have to walk a little further. We're not right in the, in the prime area. Here, why would you want to park twice?
Right. Well, I did note that, that if the Willow Glen experience is similar to what it might turn out to be in Los Cattos, that the vast majority of all the kids' classes were at times when it wasn't a high-traffic time for us. It looked like they were primarily in the middle of the day, or in the case of summer camps, they're in the mornings, and maybe even the early afternoon on weekdays, but not going into the weekend unless there was kids' birthday parties and stuff.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. The kids, usually we have little chef classes, the little ones in the morning, those are only an hour long. Usually parents stay for those because they're little, the kids are much smaller. And then maybe after school, well, there are some other kids' classes that are homeschoolers, or, you know, older kids, but many of them actually live in this area in Los Cattos Mountains, where they, that would be during the daytime. And then there's some, there are some after-school classes for kids, but primarily it's during the daytime kids' classes. And then adult, if you'll notice on the schedule, when we have adult events, they're typically from six to eight P.M.
Okay.
On nights when we don't, we purposely don't schedule those every night. On nights that we don't have those, we have those slots available for private dinner parties, if you want to get together with a group of friends and have a, you know, a dinner party, that's where you do it.
So, for example, this, this weekend, there's, there, whereas I noticed back-to-back parties all day long on Saturday, so are those corporate events or adult events, or are they kid events?
Those are typically, if it's back-to-back during the weekends, those are typically kids' birthday parties. Again, it's one of the reasons we want to open up close here, because we're full, and this is a site that's very, it's very accessible for our staff and close, and we have a clientele that.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to look to the other commissioners who have, who are waiting with their questions, and then we can circle back when he comes back for five minutes. So Commissioner Hudes, followed by Vice Chair Kane.
Thank you. I had two questions on the business model, and I appreciate, and I want to make sure I understand the alcohol part of the business model. And you said that in Willow Glen, alcohol sales contributed about two and a half percent to your revenue?
That's right.
And that it generated about a thirty percent increase in your business due to opening up adult activities?
That's right.
Okay. Do you anticipate that to be the same in Los Cattos?
Well, I anticipate that, I do anticipate that if we did not have beer and wine, that we would not be able to have the adult event. The business model would not work here. It's more expensive here as well.
And how essential is that adult event to your overall business model?
Well over fifty percent of our revenue, probably sixty-plus percent of our revenue is adult events. The ones that are, say, dependent on beer and wine, I mean, like I said, we had a thirty percent increase, so it's a significant, probably a third of our business can be attributed to events where the people may not have otherwise come if we weren't able to have that as an offering. And again, yeah.
Would you say that you are unlikely to be successful if you're not able to do adult events?
We would not proceed if we can't, oh, if we did not do adult events?
Correct, because if there were a, an alcohol restriction, and then therefore you were not doing adult events.
Yeah, I think if, we've done research on this, and there, you know, a smattering of children's cooking schools around the country, and on almost every instance, eventually they fail because they don't have a model like ours. It sounds great to do it, but unless you, if you spend that much money on a kitchen and a location, you want to keep it busy.
Okay, I have one other business model question. That's about the local chefs. When you're doing something with local chefs, who's running the establishment?
We have staff there that know the, know the facility. It's just having a guest, a guest instructor come in.
Okay. And then with regard to monitoring this, do you have a similar sort of sliding scale student-instructor ratio to what you proposed on page four of seven in your other facilities? And if so, who keeps track of that? And who asks employees to leave or kids to leave?
We keep track of that. My wife is, Shelley's runs the business, and she has a manager and a couple of staff supervisors, that if we have too many staff, I mean, there's never an instance where we say, oh no, there's too many people here, because things are scheduled ahead of time. And if, and all of our classes are booked online. If we have an event, people say how many people are coming, so we plan staff accordingly. If people don't show up, then we may let some staff go home. But the whole point of the sliding scale isn't because we want an open and ended cap. It was more because we want the ability to add more staff, and we want to say, the rules allow us, if we have one more staff member, then that just means we can have, we want, I want to be able to have extra staff, knowing that for each additional staff member we have, we can have three fewer customers. Right? So that's the whole point of that, is we may have a time where we want to do training, we may want to have four staff members there because two people are shadowing. If so, then the number, the available number would go down. We can only have ten, ten students, and there's very, very often, we have a small class. We may want to have extra staff there. So that's why I don't, I just don't want to limit on our number of staff, so long as I recognize that if we have extra staff, then the number of patrons goes down.
And the numbers that are on page four of seven, are they realistic? Would you actually have nineteen kids and one, or I think maybe it's two employees?
Is it plus? Oh, is it? Yeah. The nineteen and one is, is an infrequent, probably not with kids, but there is an instance, and again, the reason we propose this is because it's all, because that shows the maximum capacity of the place. Twenty people during the day, nineteen and one is the maximum number of bodies we could have in there, right? And, but that's an atypical situation. It has happened before. For example, Willow Glen, we had the Business Association come. They come periodically, and they meet, and they have a meeting there, maybe do some sort of activity. We only need one staff member for that.
What would be more typical than nineteen and one?
During the daytime, sixteen and two, as Ms. Puga mentioned. And on the weekends, thirty-one and three is, depending on the type of event, if it's more of an adult event, it's doable. If there's kids involved or birthday parties, it's usually the twenty-eight and four. So, you know.
So it's sixteen and two, thirty-one and three, and twenty-eight and four? Is that correct?
Those are the most typical.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to jump in with a question for you, Mr. Ballard. So beer and wine licenses, they usually lead to full alcohol licenses. So my question to you, do you envision down the road having craft cocktail pairings with food?
No.
No?
I don't.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kane?
I'd like to go, I have four questions if I can get them all in. I'd like to begin with a further discussion of the agreement you have with the landlord. And I made the question of staff, in order for you to get the additional spots, they actually have to leave the building at five-thirty for your, for your parking spots to go up. And I asked staff, is that really practical? I mean, I have an office in town, I rarely leave at five-thirty, the phone can ring at five-twenty-five, but this says I've got to be out at five. I run, I run the business, I own the building, and it says I've got to be out at five-thirty. I wonder about the practicality of that, but what I also just noticed is, this says I can't work on weekends, nor my staff. Is that practical?
Well, we only have three spaces. We only, we took, may I, may I put up the chart, the chart so we all can look at the same parking? So the top, they, they have.
That's the chart I'm working with?
Yeah, yeah, so I.
They have to be out at five-thirty during the week, and then you have the.
The parking agreement gives us six of their spaces, six of their nine allocated spaces. You can see here they have nine allocated spaces, right? Six of them on the weekends. The owner will come up, and like you, he owns the building, and he also, that's his office. They have nine point four-six spaces allocated there. They have four employees there, and none of them use the onsite parking. In fact, they have a parking agreement, which they gave me a copy, I'm not sure if it's in the, has been submitted to the commission. They, all of their people park in the tollhouse. They have a monthly agreement where everybody parks there because it's easier for them. They don't use a single onsite parking spot, they don't use a single offsite parking spot. So just like when we look at, you know, I've, so.
Be that as it may, I've asked staff this question, they have to be out of the building at five-thirty. Or are you allowing people to take their spots over at the tollhouse?
The, I'm sorry, they're, I'll let, I'll let the owner speak to this, but they don't have to all be out by five-thirty. They have, they still, we're only taking six of their nine, nine point six, nine point four-six spots.
Now, this may be a tempest in a teapot, but let me seek clarification.
Okay.
What, when I first discussed the parking situation on this very, you know, four parking spots, that the contract, the letter of understanding that they have with the landlord, says they get extra spots at five-thirty. And I made the inquiry, does that mean that the landlord and his or her staff need to leave at five-thirty to create those spots? And the answer that I got from staff was correct. Is that correct?
I'll look to Ms. Puga.
So that was an incorrect statement. So if you look at the parking table, they still have three point four parking spaces left, so there still would be the availability for them to use the space after five-thirty P.M. and on the weekends.
So they don't have to leave the building?
That's correct.
But they somehow create additional parking by staying there?
Well, they still have a remaining balance of parking left.
I'll admit I'm confused. My second question, I asked earlier of staff, when you have sixteen, nineteen children, either at a birthday party or for, I'm not sure what you call it, date night or mom and dad's night out, when you have sixteen, and you had junior chef classes, what, from three to five, and junior, senior classes from five to eight years old?
Oh, yeah.
These are, these are young kids.
Young kids, yeah.
And, and if, if I had a young child and I wanted a date night or something, I could drop my child off at, I don't know, six, seven o'clock, have a two-hour dinner. The people taking care of the children, whether it's daytime or nighttime, are they certified?
Are they s-
Certified for, for small childcare supervision?
All of our, well, two of our manager and my wife are both early childhood development certified. We owned a preschool for almost ten years ourselves, and some of our same staff is there. Not all of the staff is certified. We're not regulated, we're not required by the state of California to have childcare, if it's childcare certification. If, the rules are if it's, I mean, there are some drop-in kid care places, if you look at them, as long as they're there during a certain number of hours, under, with, under a certain number of hours, or a certain number of hours cumulative throughout the week or something like that, throughout a month, then it's not considered a childcare facility.
I'm just being a dad, and I don't, and I don't understand the law, but if I drop them off at seven o'clock at night with fifteen other three-year-olds, five-year-olds, eight-year-olds, those people don't have to be certified?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we have staff policies, and we have, you know, but certified by the state of California or anybody, I'm not sure what you mean by certified, but it's not a childcare.
Certified, vetted, background.
It's not a childcare center.
All right. I want to get a vision of how this works. So we have Uncle Harry's birthday, and thirty of us are coming, or twenty. But it's a class, it's not a party. We're going to learn how to cook something. So there's going to be one or two people there teaching us, working at, I love your layout, by the way. Very nice. One or two people, or three, maybe you assign an instructor each one of those tables, perhaps, I don't know how it works. But how does the beer and wine work? Is it self-serve, or do you have a waiter, or?
You would order it from one of the, one of our staff members.
So the person teaching?
In a restaurant. Well, no, we have, we always have a lead instructor, and in a scenario like you said, probably two helpers, right? So one of the-
The helpers would go and get the beer and wine?
Yeah, one of the staff members is in charge of going around, just like a waiter in a way, but they're seeing, how are you guys doing with your cooking? Can I get you anything, you know, any utensils? There's always a head instructor, and then there's other staff members who are there to help take care of the customer, make sure everything's going smoothly.
I'm guessing it works in Willow Glen, but we may have different requirements than San Jose. And I'm trying to see four people teaching cookie, cooking, also serving beer and wine, which limits my birthday party to twenty-eight people. That was, that's how it would work?
Yes, it would limit the numbers. I have to look at the table, yes.
Okay. All right. And my final question is very important. You understand that during the summer, you won't be able to work on Wednesday nights? Jazz in the players, we can't have any competition for, it's only ten weeks, but I'm sure.
We'll come up with a.
That's a hell of an event. I mean, we pack a whole bunch of people in there, and if they wanted to learn how to cook a pie, they could come on over and.
Well, then we come up, you know, occasionally Willow Glen, not quite as extravagant, but they have dancing on the avenue and events like that. And yeah, we were careful, we're mindful to not schedule events that are going to be a headache for everybody at those times. But it does give us an opportunity to open our doors and let people come in and see and hand out information, so it's almost as valuable.
You said you've been in town for a long time, so you know how magic you can get on those summer Wednesday nights, that's all.
Was that a question or a statement?
Did you know?
Okay. All right. We are going to move on. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. You'll have an opportunity to come back up, and we'll ask you more questions, I'm sure, but we're waiting to hear from members of the public. And I have two speaker cards here. John Machado?
I'm John Machado. I reside at one-six-four-one-one Matilla Drive in Los Cattos, California. And I work on, been hired by Mr. Tate, the property owner who will be speaking, to lease this property. We were very specific in the type of tenants we were looking for. We are very happy with Cachina Bambina, because in my experience in working in the town here for over thirty years, the foot traffic for traditional retail seems to die right at Main Street. We don't get a lot of foot traffic as far as retailers. People may walk to the Willows and have pizza and beer, or they may get an ice cream or at the Burger, but as far as retail shoppers, we've been not successful in getting them to go that far south or west in town. So we were seeking a destination retailer that had experience in operation. I did visit the store in Willow Glen, and there are other retailers in that area, and everything was very positive feedback. We also liked the idea that it caters to the children, and it's an educational class in addition to what Surlatte and Williams and Sonoma does, which are big chains. in addition to what Sir Latale and Williams &amp; Sonoma does, which are big chains. And we know in Los Gatos, we'd like to help the individual, and we're not as maybe formula store oriented. So we feel this is a proper fit, and we don't want to have continual revolving doors in this location. And we feel this, this particular use will be here long-term and serve the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Any questions from commissioners? See none? Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Tate.
Evening commissioners. My name is Ron Tate. Excuse me. I've owned the property for 18 years. I've resided in the property for 18 years. I have my real estate development company upstairs. I've been doing real estate development for 57 years, owned a lot of commercial real estate over the years. The, my location, I struggled with it from the beginning of the time. My average tenant has stayed two years, because having to have retail where there's no foot traffic is, just doesn't work. And there never will be any, because I have the park, I have the post office, and the only retailer now left coming south on North Santa Cruz Avenue is the hardware store. And to be successful in, I know you're right, you don't care about my success, but my success can only be successful if I have somebody that's destination. The beauty shop I have is destination, and the rest of the retail has just been a total failure. I mean, I've, they've, I've had to evict three tenants, and in 18 years I've had eight tenants, different retail tenants. But that being said, I believe this use is, oh, let me clear up one other thing. No, I don't leave my office at 4 o'clock some days, or 5 o'clock some days, but I park, and all my employees park in the tollhouse parking lot. We do not park onsite. I have a contract with them, you should have a letter in your file, I got from the tollhouse. I've been paying them to park there for 15 years in their parking lot. So that being said, I don't, I don't impact the parking at all. The other issue that I think is really important is, I think this is kind of a use that's different. It's been successful in our area, and this is not a drinking establishment. This is not a cocktail lounge. People don't come in to have a cocktail. I don't drink at all, I never have drank, but I go to meet people sometimes at the wine bars, and 90% of those people, they're legally drunk, because they sit there and they drink. This is not how this works. This, people come in and they have a beer or a glass of wine, or they pair the wines with the food, and that is a different, wholly different kind of establishment. But that being said, my wife and I have decided, actually, if in fact we don't get this use, we're probably just going to put dead storage downstairs, because every time I have a tenant turnover, it's about $25,000 to $30,000 between paying the broker (laugh) and paying, paying leasing commissions and everything else, it just doesn't work out for us. We're just not going to try it anymore, because we're not a retail location. Just one quick thing. There's 51 retailers from South Santa, it's from Main Street going down to Highway 9. I have one, the hardware store. So I really wish that you would approve this use. I think it would be good for the, for the town and a service that's not offered here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tate. We have a question for you from Commissioner Hudes.
Sure.
Hi, thank you. And I appreciate looking for a creative use of the space to enhance the vitality of our downtown. And I understand that, you know, retail may be a challenge in that space, and so thinking about this, I, it's coming down to a question about, really about the parking. And there were some statements that were made about the parking not being used by the existing tenants, that they were parking offsite. Is that correct? And could you describe the parking situation behind the building?
Excuse me. The parking behind the building is strictly for the tenants, for the shoppers, the people that come and go. We, none of our employees are allowed, our employees cannot even pull in the parking lot. That's the rule. They have to park at the tollhouse and walk back and forth. So the, the parking is used by the tenants, and a lot of times it's used by people who don't belong in the parking lot, but they're, they're there. And so we have, you know, we have other high-tensity, long-term uses such as a spa, and they have, you know, ladies come and have their hair done there four or five hours. And so, but my parking is policed by us, and we do not, as like I said, four of us, actually have five people now, but we all have parking passes, we do not park in the parking lot. It's not allowed.
Follow-up, I mean, do you believe that, that there will be parking for 12, seven plus five customers plus instructors, up to 18, 16 plus two during the day? And also 22 plus six in the evening? And 34 plus two in the evening?
Uh, yes. There, you know, there's a map that shows where, where all the parking is. This is not a big deal, and they'll give it to their, their, their students. We've talked about this. There's a map that shows where all of the all-day parking is, where the short-term parking is. I, look, it's a challenge. This is, this is, this is why Los Gatos is so vibrant, because there isn't enough parking. And I don't think there ever will be enough parking, per se, as parking goes. And so, yes, I do believe that people, if people look for parking, the way I tell people, when people come to see me, I say, look, if there's no parking in my parking lot, and I don't have, I have very few people come to see me, I have 10 visitors a month on the outside. But if people park, you know, everybody seems to find a parking space. It's a little bit of a challenge, but it is a challenge. Every business has that challenge. I don't know if anybody has enough parking.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions?
There's going to be a question, Ron.
You know, I'm hard of hearing, so you have to speak up.
You know what? I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on, so no wonder. I was going to tell you that Vice Chair Kane has a question and not a statement for you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I'm speechless. Number one, Mr. Tate, I, I know your contribution to the town and your many, many years of living here, contributing and et cetera. I wish you success on the project, and I'm trying to get my hands around the parking, and I'm trying to get my hands around the alcohol and the children. You have a letter of understanding signed by Mr. and Mrs. Ballard and yourself. It says, "In accordance with our lease, each Monday to Friday after 5:00 PM and all day on Saturday and Sunday during the term of the lease, landlord assigns six additional parking spaces from the total number of parking spaces allocated to landlord in connection with its business operations on the second floor." And you mentioned that you are a commercial realtor with a full staff, et cetera. So that's where I got the impression...
No, I'm a commercial real estate developer. I have very little, I don't have real estate sales paper or anything.
Commercial real estate developer?
Correct.
I'm sorry. Because you have time-specific is why I thought staff would have to leave to vacate those spots. Otherwise, why be specific about the time at all? Simply allocate the spots to them?
Sure. Perfect.
You can do that?
Absolutely. Not a problem.
See, where it gave me the impression that you had to go home at 5:30? Because it specifies 5:30, and I didn't know why I would do that if it didn't matter.
That's, maybe that slipped between the crack. I'm, no, I, I do not leave the building sometimes at 5:30, but sometimes I leave at 4:30, sometimes leave at 9:30, but I'm never parked in any, any of the public parking spaces.
I didn't say you were. I'm just saying your letter of understanding says 5:30, Monday to Friday, and all day on Saturday and Sunday. And I thought that meant less use of the spots, so that you could get the six additional use to which they were, you were assigning to them. No?
Well, I, I didn't understand your question. Please repeat it.
Your letter of understanding specifies that after 5:30, Monday to Friday, you allow the tenant to use six additional parking spaces, and all day on Saturday and Sunday. So I got the impression that meant to create those six spaces, you and your staff had to leave at 5:30. And I asked that question of staff, and they said, yeah, I think that's their understanding. If you're saying it doesn't matter, I'm saying, why did you put in the 5:30? Why didn't you just give them the six spaces?
That's, that's an error.
The letter is an error?
Let me have an error. Yes. Yeah. Because I, that just doesn't, I don't know why it was filled out that way, but we don't park in the parking spaces, we just never use them. We never use it in any public parking.
So Exhibit 5 is superfluous, where it differentiates between 5:30 before and after and weekends. In other words, it really should be just one chart, because you're dedicating those six spaces 24/7.
That is correct.
Fascinating. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. The zoning code under CUP states that there are uses that might be compatible with ordinary allowed uses if properly located and regulated. These are called conditional uses. Goes on to say, and then it lists them, refers you to the table of the conditional uses. Goes on to say, however, the listing of a conditional use does not indicate that the use must be allowed, which brings you to the parking issue. Also, in the general plan, under Land Use Policy 9.3, and this is under the Central Business District, it says, "Encourage a mix of retail and office in commercial areas except in the CDB designation where retail should be the emphasis." So I have a couple of, I don't have any particular thing to say about this project itself, but it seems to me that there are trends that seem to be happening. Merging spaces, changing spaces from retail uses to less intensive retail with just a partial bit of retail, and alcohol with practically everything. And I think these are issues that need to be seriously considered, and that's all within your discretion, given the fact that that's exactly what the zoning code actually says or implies under the CUP designation. The question I have goes back to parking, and, and that is, without knowing what the requirements or the actual use of the beauty parlor is next door, and the number of employees, and the number of stations, and, you know, people being there overlapping, et cetera, how do you know that the parking spaces that are allotted in the general parking district are actually not being used by that business? And I'm not sure I've ever heard of the kind of arrangement that would allow for the use all the time. The alternate parking uses are usually based on the uses being different in time. And so I'm just asking that all of that be considered in your deliberation.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Quintana? See none? Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right. We will give the applicant another five minutes to step back up to the podium and add any further comments about the application.
Thank you. First, I'll start with the questions that were posed to Mr. Tate, and try to clarify a little bit around that parking agreement. So I think the distinction between daytime and afternoon, this was an agreement that we had posed to Ron, and that's why he had, didn't have a definitive answer, that basically it was a mistake. And perhaps it was a mistake. It came from our discussions over the past, I don't know how long, like I said, over a year or so, with planning staff and others and our reading of the code. I'd requested at one time if we could try to get there more spaces during the daytime, and the understanding was, at least my interpretation of the understanding was, that we could do a parking agreement, but it would have to be an after-hours thing. So that's why the parking agreement was structured that way. If we're hearing from planning that, that that's irrelevant, that it looks more about the actual use of the parking and the, and the parking code, which I think it should be, then you're right, the parking agreement, the distinction between daytime and evening is, is kind of moot, and it's, it doesn't belong. So that's what I would say about that. And also along the lines of the parking and the plan, I also want to clarify that, that the town code, it describes the calculations for, I mean, they can be confusing, but there are defined calculations and defined allocations within the parking district for businesses. And it takes a while, it took a while for me to understand them, but they're very clear, and our use complies with those calculations. Now, one could argue with the rationale behind the calculations to say, well, three to one, does that really fit? I would argue, if we were an exercise studio, or a hair salon, or an ale salon, three to one may not be appropriate. Four to one is what restaurants use. That's more appropriate for us. That's why I feel very comfortable with our parking calculations, because the fact is, most people come to our venue in groups. They don't come like they're going to go to an exercise studio by themselves. They come in groups, just like going to a restaurant. So I think, I feel very comfortable, I mean, I imagine the town put a lot of time into coming up with the calculations and the policies behind parking. And I also know that there's some question about how those are being applied to other businesses, but I would request that those same doubts, doubts don't be applied to us, because I think our business model is very different, and I think it's very conservative, actually, if you apply those calculations to our business, a three to one. And then the last thing I'll mention is, there was a public comment about the, the general plan and whether or not, you know, citing a specific code, whether or not we meet that. I think if you read the justification letter that we submitted, I cited, I think, at least 10 different, I didn't list them out, and I certainly don't have time to list them out, but I've got 10 different policies, and with, what, three, four, five within the land use element, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 8 or 9 within the human services element that we directly meet. And this isn't with some broad interpretation of any of them. Again, there's no time to go through them. I assume that it wasn't necessary, but I think if anybody took the time to see how we really benefit the town of Los Gatos and how we meet, I challenge you to find any other business that meets even half of these that we meet. And it's due to the flexibility of our business. But the only way our business model works is in the way that we've proposed. So major changes to that model, meaning changes to, drastic changes to the parking, or drastic changes, or refusal of alcohol, would change our business model, and it would probably make it untenable for us.
You still have more time? If you'd like to continue?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Kane?
Mr. Ballard, have you had an opportunity to read the letters, the desk items that we received from the neighbors on Broadway?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Now, can we put that parking chart back up that you had up earlier? And I'm mildly flabbergasted, which may mean I misunderstood what was just said, but the essence of what was just said is the top chart doesn't matter, doesn't exist. What it says is that the promise, if you look, view it as a promise in complying with town code, under students and instructors on the top chart, where you promised to have four students for the four instructors, since that chart doesn't matter anymore, since the extra spaces can be allocated to you 24/7, then, then my word earlier is superfluous comes into play, and instead of promising us 10 and 4, you can do 28 and 4, 24/7. Did I get that right?
Now I'm having a little trouble following yours.
Well, you said the letter of understanding was a mistake with respect to the time parameters.
Yeah.
And the chart, of the two charts, the one on top is a function of those two time parameters.
That's right.
Daytime. And it says daytime, you can have 10 students and four instructors. But we kind of just said that it's irrelevant. There is no daytime, there is no nighttime, there is no weekend. The six spaces can be allocated to you 24/7, 365, which means, instead of 10, 4, you get 28 and 4, 24/7. The bottom chart is the only chart that exists or has any meaning if the letter of understanding was a mistake.
If the letter, if the, if the date qualifications on the letter, on the letter are a mistake, if we are allowed... If the letter, if the date qualifications on the letter are a mistake, if we are allowed, and if our understanding with planning that we had to put time bans on the parking agreement, if the parking agreement could only be in the evening, then if that's not correct, and the parking agreement could be anytime, then yes, you're right, the bottom chart is the correct chart.
So your letter of understanding was a function of what you thought you heard from staff? Otherwise, why make any time differentiation?
The time restrictions on the letter of understanding is what I thought from staff. It's very possible that it's my mistake, but that was my understanding or misunderstanding from my staff.
I think it's a good faith misunderstanding. However, you can see where I'm coming from, that we're not going to have 10 and 4, we're going to have 28 and 4, anytime the 28 show up. There's no daytime restriction.
Well, I mean, like I said, if you look at the parking calculations and what, the practical reality of the parking, of how we could be allowed spaces, if in fact, they're not using their spaces, and if those could be allocated to us during the daytime, as you're suggesting, then yes, we should be allowed to have those numbers under the town code.
So the question is, can you see how I misled by the top chart, which has no meaning whatsoever, apparently?
Yeah, I could say, yeah, I could see that. It was certainly not intentional, and...
I didn't say it was. I just had to put that in the form of a question. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Oh, I just had a question. The site has 1,475 square feet allocated to your business, correct?
That's right.
So my question was, just a practical question. If you had the maximum amount of students and instructors, which on this chart would be 34 plus 2, 36 people, that turns out to be like 40 square feet per person. Is that normal for, that doesn't seem like very much space. I just...
Well, it depends. I'm sorry.
I mean, is that, does that work for your business to have people that, you know, that many people in that small of a space?
It depends on the type of an event, but yeah, we have, we sometimes will have events where it's just more of an appetizer-making class, where everybody doesn't sit down, but there's stations, and people can go around. For example, corporate events, people go around, and they can go to different stations, and they can cook, and it's more on their feet, moving around. I mean, we've had many more than that. Our current location, like I said, is 2,100 square feet, and we can accommodate much larger parties than 34 people. I mean, like I said, the reality is, if we have a party that large, there's very few circumstances where we probably only have two people. More often, we'd want more staff, and that's why I wanted the sliding scale. I want to be able to add more staff. But yeah, there are instances where we would only need two staff if it's, depending on the type of an event, if it's more of a meeting type of an event, and yeah.
Well, that answers my question. Thank you. Any further questions? Seenan, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing and ask if any commissioners have any questions, comments, or motions. Commissioner Erickson?
So this is probably a question for the chair and for Principal Mr. Paulson. Ms. Ren, it happens to be in attendance, so would it be appropriate to let her be a staff person that we could ask questions of?
I think that'd be an excellent idea. Mr. Paulson?
That is perfectly fine. I'd just like to clarify the parking concern so that we can get that squared away. Alternating use of parking, there's specific town code language that speaks to some uses generating parking demands primarily during hours when the remaining uses are closed. So staff's understanding is that those would be vacated. You can't allocate parking spaces, whether you're using them or not, onsite for the 24/7 scenario that you've allocated. So the two charts do apply, but the requirements would be that those businesses would have to be closed, so you need to make that distinction.
So the clarification is unnecessary, but there's been some confusion. I just want to do it again. The reason we had the distinction to create the six spaces is we closed the business. That means I have to leave at 5:30, and I can't work on weekends, neither myself nor my staff. Is that correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a follow-up question to that. So is it possible to condition this use on the presence of the apparent type of agreement that there is between the landlord or the owner and the tollhouse to help address? In other words, can we write in a condition into this conditional use permit that would require the landowner to have in place and on file with the town an agreement to have parking spaces, and it could either be specific to the tollhouse or to some of the location in town?
You could. However, we also would have to bring in the tollhouse, because they would need a CUP to allow for alternating use of parking, and they'd have to show that they have excess parking from what they currently need on their space.
Right. I understand that, but it's not, it would be permissible to do that?
It could, but it couldn't be approved until that agreement is reached.
I understand.
Ms. Ren, thank you for stepping in on short notice. So do we have questions for Ms. Ren? Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you for being here. There are people at your house who would prefer your being there, I assume. So I have a couple of questions for you that I'm going to ask at the same time, and then I've got another question that I'll keep apart. So the first part of it is, do you have general comments about this particular type of business? And in your judgment, since you have the greatest sensitivity to the economic vitality of the downtown, you have general comments about that, and then I'll do two subsets to that. They talked about a destination business, and so in your comments about it, can you talk about that concept? I don't need to elaborate more, you know, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. And then if in fact one were to not have the top half of the chart, parking chart, and it were possible for it to be extended for seven days a week, 24 hours a day, are there other reasons, based on your knowledge of business activity in that part of the Central Business District, that it would be wise to limit the parking or have a different parking standard, either for those specified times or for other specified times?
So generally, I see this as a perfect type of business for the time that we're in, in the retail world, and I think that Mr. Machado touched on it a little bit. We're really, and we've had this conversation, I think, in other meetings between us and at council, is we do over and oversee these hybrid businesses. I think we often hear the term, people need something to show up for. These, just standalone retail is not the strongest market right now, and certainly not on South Santa Cruz. There is not foot traffic. Once you kind of get to that Linden Plaza, people do go there to stop and eat, but they don't typically travel past. There's not much there. The U-turn of the foot traffic kind of happens there. We noticed the same thing at the Main Street Bridge. While there are 51 retailers on Main Street, people will turn the corner on Main Street, they get to the bridge, and it trickles off. It's just the behavior of how people shop. So I actually see, I worked a lot, a long time with Mr. and Mrs. Ballard on different locations, you know, we looked at all over Los Gatos, and really, this does seem like a great fit. It's something that you could walk to if, you know, if you live around there. There are schools and preschools nearby that could do field trips to it. It's really, in my opinion, it's a great fit. I have had the benefit to visit their other location for my own personal use, and I see that being something that will fit in our community. As far as the second question, you know, I think that people find parking. We have events here that bring in 850 people. We had the Great Race and our sustainability event in one day a couple of weeks ago, and we were greatly impacted, probably had 1,500 extra people here in town, and still had people shopping, still had people dining, and still had enough for people to park, pick up their friends from the race. We had an entire parking lot closed. I think people can find the parking. So while we don't, you know, have places to file millions and millions of cars, I don't think that the difference between 22, 28, 31 students is going to make or break anything. Does that answer the questions?
Commissioner Erickson?
So there wouldn't be any particular rationale from your base, aside from the parking regulation, the alternative parking, those kinds of considerations, just from a pure economic vitality? There's no particular reason to differentiate from whatever the maximum might be allowed?
I don't, I don't think there is, no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, as a follow-up to the parking question, I asked the question earlier. I'd be interested in your perspective on it. There are businesses there now, and at one time, those businesses were vibrant. They had some, they generated some parking demand. What's your assessment of this new business versus these other businesses when they were vibrant?
So from the parking perspective, what do I think the delta kind of would be? You know, it's interesting, because I think that the majority of the people, just out of, again, out of behavior, who will go to that location or go even to Willow Street or something, I don't know that they would necessarily go down and turn up Broadway to park. I think the majority of people would be looking at that parking lot, maybe where the Chamber of Commerce is, or some of those other kind of well-known public spots. I can't imagine that there will be a large amount of people that will go to that spot first and then look for parking, except for maybe the person who's not familiar with our town. But for the majority of people, if you know something's on South Santa Cruz, you're likely to start looking for a parking spot at Elm or one of the other parking lots. So I don't particularly think that this would cause that much difference.
As a follow-up, are there other businesses where the business themselves tells their customers about alternatives for parking?
Give me an example of kind of what you're asking. I'm not sure I'm clear on that.
Well, this is a business that isn't a drop-in business. This is a business that's scheduled ahead. Are there other businesses in town that are scheduled ahead where the business owner suggests where people might park if there isn't parking, you know, right next door?
Absolutely. I think the Personal Services would be a great example of that. If you have an appointment, and you know it's six weeks out, and maybe you go to that same person every six weeks, you may have a conversation with them about where do you park, you know? Or they may say, hey, we suggest you park here. Another suggestion could come from a restaurant. If you have reservations and you know you have a party of 12, you may ask them, or they may suggest where you park. We don't have any obvious guidelines or rules that people do that, but I think just in general, we also get, have the Chamber of Commerce that serves as our visitation center, and they will often give people suggestions on where to look for public parking.
Commissioner Hanson?
I was just curious as to your opinion, I don't know if this analogy is going to make sense, but do you, if you're trying to compare this, since it's different than anything else we have, is this, do you think this is more like, I don't even know if it's still there, but remember Petroglyph, where they had kids' parties that was on Santa Cruz? Is it still there? Okay. Do you think this is more like Petroglyph, or is it more like Orange Theory Fitness? Because, you know, just trying to frame the parking in my mind, that would, that would kind of be the, you know, the range of things, because, and I think you're going to, I would just like to see what you thought.
You know, I don't think it's really either. I think it's probably a combination. The idea of having a drop-in, I think, is where, so as staff, we often do that same thing. We get an applicant that comes in, and we say, okay, what are they like? What avenue are we going to push them down? And we saw that with We Olive, I think, that they came in and they had all these different facets that didn't necessarily fit into one box that we were used to seeing. I think Kachina Bambini is a good example of that. As far as kind of a marketing or a draw of clientele, I would see them being closer to a Petroglyph, where you do, and I mean, I'm deep in the birthday party circuit right now with my own family, and I know you often do, you know, you take three kids, and someone else picks those three kids up. So it is an accurate statement to say that it's not, you know, one car per person that's coming to those classes.
So in that sense, it's very different than the fitness model?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ren. Vice Chair Kane?
You said you'd worked with the applicants on trying to find a suitable location. I imagine that involves a length of time of working with them to get things worked out. Did you, did it ever come up on the confusion regarding the six extra spaces requiring that the operations upstairs be closed and shut down after 5:30 and on weekends?
For me personally, I think because I work with the code so often, it didn't seem confusing to me. We often look at parameters around office hours, shared parking, something that comes up quite a bit, especially with bank lots and things. So to be honest, it wasn't something that I even thought twice about.
But it seems confusing to them, the two versions that we've heard tonight.
Is that a question? I don't know.
I know you've got the economic vitality, but, you know, what I'm looking at is less vitality. It's more like, which is it? Chart number one, chart number two? And if the applicant doesn't understand the businesses need to be closed down, then that may not be acceptable to the applicant, it sees germane to the whole question. What do you think?
There's the question. You know what? We do this a lot. We look at shared parking a lot, so I think that it's actually a reasonable thing to do. It's a question that we hear over and over when we bring things to council, is why do we have empty office lots at night when other jurisdictions ask their restaurants and their nighttime businesses to use those? So this is one opportunity that we have when we can do that.
The other question is, are you aware of any requirement on certification for childcare of children at night or in any such setting?
I agree with what the applicant said about the amount of few hours that you can do a drop-off. It's done in a lot of places, these parents' night out. It's a very common thing, and the employees can run it. The parents make the choice to leave the kids there for that short period of time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for being here.
Of course.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
I just wanted to understand from staff, where in the language does it permit childcare?
It doesn't permit childcare.
So childcare is excluded?
Parents' night out is another class setting.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion amongst commissioners? Commissioner Erickson?
So Mr. Paulson has been very patient with me over the years I've been on the Planning Commission, so I'm going to ask his patience again. So can you back up to what you said to us about the alternate parking spaces and kind of go over that again? I'm trying to, I have, I think it, I think I have most of this sorted out for myself, and then how what you said applies to, applies to whether Exhibit 5 is still, should be, should look like Exhibit 5, if in fact one were to incorporate that, potentially incorporate that as a part of the conditions of approval?
Sure. So Ms. Puga can put that up on the screen, if you can zoom up the alternating use piece. So it's in the town code, 2910, 150E, alternating use of parking. So as you can see up there, I was just paraphrasing some of that, and where some of the uses generate parking demands primarily during hours when the remaining uses are closed, alternating use of space is allowed, but only if specifically authorized by a conditional use permit. So from staff's perspective, and I'll let Ms. Puga, who obviously had done most of the interaction with the applicants, speak to this further, but from staff's perspective, the two charts are applicable if they are going to meet the requirements of town code.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a follow-up question to that. So, and I'm not sure which of the, all the staff, including potentially Assistant Town Attorney. So when we have public testimony that there is an apparent agreement between the tollhouse and the owner of this property to use on a regular basis, apparently, we haven't seen the, I assume none of us have seen that, I mean, none of us have seen it, I assume that you haven't, to occupy, I believe it was four, I believe that's what the public testimony was, six, six spaces, and the tollhouse, do we need to, do we have a... testimony was, six, six spaces in the toll house, do we need to, do we have a duty or responsibility to understand whether that exists, and whether or not that should be taken into, and whether that causes the toll house to have a deficiency in its parking? And should that be taken into consideration before we make our recommendation to the town council and/or, I mean, we could, we can obviously make a recommendation that says, check this out, council, but, but ultimately, before this conditional use permit would be approved by the town? Do you understand the question that I'm asking?
Yes, generally, I understand the question. And so the options are, one, to fold it into part of your recommendation that be addressed. Staff would have to do some analysis of the toll house. They technically would have to have a current CUP with the toll house for alternating use of parking in that scenario, which I don't believe exists. And so that becomes problematic from that perspective. Given the code language, I wouldn't suggest, I'll defer to the town attorney, that you stray from the alternating use language in the code. But again, you can make that part of the recommendation, and ultimately, the council has the ability to interpret the town code. I haven't seen it done that way in the past. It's, all of the ones that I can recall have been when businesses are closed. That's when those parking, whether it's credits or actual parking spaces, are freed up for the other use.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to make a comment. I, I thought that, based on the testimony from the applicant, and, and I know from me looking at their website, it, it seems like the majority of their business is in the evenings and on the weekends, maybe with the exception of the summer, because there's summer camps for kids on weekdays. So I'm not really sure what the big deal is about having additional spaces between 10:30 and 5:30, 10:00 AM and 5:30 Monday through Friday, when, you know, the issue is really that most of the traffic that they're going to generate is in the evenings and the weekends. So just, that was my question.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Hudes?
So maybe I, I could maybe get the ball rolling a little bit. I, I'm, I'm really trying to balance the, the desire to have a really thriving downtown, particularly in the face of the challenges that'll be presented with the North Forty and the, the amount of retail that has, has been approved in the specific plan there. And so given the, kind of the changing definition of retail and the challenges that are coming, I am very favorable to this type of use. However, I think that as I'm reading the application, it's heavy on the use and not very heavy on the conditions. And so I have seven conditions that I've been thinking about that would make it more into balance and, and more acceptable in my mind. So the, the first one would be to specifically exclude it to use as a childcare facility. The, the second one would, would be that staff would be present during the time when non-employee chefs host their own events. The third is that alcohol will not be served during children's events. And the fourth would be to require the landlord to have an agreement with, for off-site parking, which I think would delay actually the final approval of this until that were proven. The next one would be to have a review after three months, six months, and then annually. The next one would be to inform customers, particularly in the, in the case of booking events in advance, of alternative parking locations, the responsibility of the business owner to do that. And then finally, coming to the chart and the maximums, I think per the testimony of the applicant, I think the top numbers are just not realistic, the 19 and 1. So I would drop down to 16-2, 13-3, 10-4, and 7-5, and exclude the 19-1 during the day. And during the evening, again, per the testimony of the applicant, I would exclude the 34-2 and drop down to the 31-3, 28-4, 25-5, and 22-6, and specify those as maximums in the conditional use permit. So those are some thoughts.
I have a question for you, Commissioner Hudes. With the condition of no alcohol during children's events, there is a parent-child classes. So would that include the parent-child classes where the parent might want to drink alcohol?
In my mind, that would. It would be excluded during that time as well.
Thank you.
So it would be adult-only events where alcohol would be permitted, and I think would be acceptable.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Commissioner Erickson?
So a couple of questions from my esteemed commissioner colleague. So because a, if I understand correctly, because a childcare facility is a particular use and, and has a definition, and the use is specified in this, and the use does not include a childcare facility, it also doesn't include many other uses. I'm not sure your rationale between, for specifically wanting to incorporate language for excluding a use which isn't named. So that's just, it's a question for you. I've got some other questions about some of your other.
So that, that may be a question for staff as well as to whether that's necessary, but there, there seemed to be in the application, that's why I was asking the question before, is there the possibility of children being dropped off for childcare while parents, you know, go somewhere else and it, not, you know, not there for a class, but for childcare? Is that, is that something that's explicitly outlined in the application?
I would look to Ms. Puga on whether or not there's any specification of the parents' night out, but we would not consider that a childcare facility if that's what you're looking at. But Ms. Puga might be able to offer some additional information.
I don't have much offer besides what the applicant provided as their description of what the parent night class is, and then again, refer to what the director said, that we define childcare in our town code with size and with specifications that are required, and the conditions on this permit would be for group cooking classes and do not include, include daycare.
So in that sense, I, in response, I would exclude parents' night out from a permitted use. But, you know, dropping children for a class where the children are enrolled in a class, I would say would be a permitted use.
Chair, but can I ask some additional questions?
Yes, Commissioner Erickson, go ahead.
So the fifth condition was a three-month, six-month, and annual review. So I assumed that meant annually a review. And I wasn't clear whether it was at the end of a year or if it was each year, but I wasn't also, but more important to me than that is what, what is being reviewed at the end of three months, and what is being reviewed at the end of six months, and what is being reviewed either at the end of 12 months or each year? And what's the purpose of that review?
So I, to get to the first point, it would, in my mind, it would be three months after the approval, six months after the approval, and then annually thereafter, depending on how staff does these things, whether they do them on a calendar basis or whether they track them on an individual permission basis, I don't, I don't know which way they operate. With, with regard to what's being reviewed, to me, it's the conditions in the permit, and are they being met? In particular, there are some that I think are ones that, you know, are a little tricky, the sliding scale, the, and the, and the parking. And, you know, are, are, are there conflicts on the parking? And are, are the, all of the conditions in the permit being met?
I have a question for you, Commissioner Hudes. So staff recommended no alcohol in the drop-in area, because technically cupcakes aren't really considered a meal. So with what you're proposing with the added conditions, how do you feel about that, especially if it's just adults that might be in the drop-in area that are decorating cupcakes and not necessarily children?
To me, the issue wasn't about the area that was being used, it was about the presence of, of children. So for me, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't adopt that recommendation. I would just go with that alcohol will not be served when, during children's events.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kane?
Commissioner Hudes, it's not, you know, there is a concern with whether or not children are present, but the drop-off zone decorating a cupcake is not a meal. And that's what they were trying to get at with their recommended restriction on alcohol. So as, as, as you've got it proposed, I wouldn't support that. It's about whether or not there's a meal that in fact is being served in whatever location where alcohol is being served. I wanted to continue, Madam Chair, with what's becoming for me the $64 question. On that chart that we had up on the wall, Commissioner Hanson, I wasn't concerned with nine to five. I'm concerned with understanding the six spots that are created in the evening and on weekends, and the fact that there may be some confusion on the applicant's part when he stated, I'm, I work nights and weekends. I work nights and weekends, I appreciate that, but if you or your staff does work nights or weekends vis-à-vis what you've got up on the wall that says closed, that means the office is closed. And I, I wouldn't want that condition to be imposed on anybody, especially me, because it's, it's not practical. I couldn't, I couldn't run a business that way, where I have to leave at 5:30 on a weekend. And I'm not sure the applicant understood that, because he said, well, the letter was a mistake and the time limits were not that material, which, which vacates the top chart and gets us back to 24/7. I can do all that parking stuff. And I don't think it was understood that if we go with the allocation of those six spots after hours, unfortunately, the office has got to be closed nights and weekends. So I don't know what I would do if it comes to making a recommendation without understanding how the applicant feels about that restriction and whether or not that's a viable restriction going forward, or is it, you know, the whole thing is, is going to come undone if that's not understood. I don't know how to do that without reopening the public hearing, which I'd recommend, but...
Well, and that can be part of your, again, your recommendation moving forward, this still has to go to the town council. And so if you have a strong opinion one way or the other, then that could be part of the recommendation from this body.
I don't have that strong an opinion. The applicant does. I'm going to work nights and weekends, which I totally appreciate, but it's going to come at cost, given what you've shown up on the board.
Most definitely.
So then, so then the, the conditions will be unintentionally violated?
Well, the conditions will be modified as appropriate by the town council, and a determination will be made, and they'll have to function under whatever conditions are approved.
I understand.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to make a general comment, and then I would be prepared to make a motion. I, I actually, in, in hearing all the testimony, I, I initially was pretty concerned. I, I actually think this is a good use for the location. I do think it is a bit risky, only because it's a business model that we don't, aren't familiar with, and we're not sure how it's going to work. I, I feel that if we have a review, I, I could deal with a year from now, if we have some kind of review in place relative to what's been happening with the parking, what's been happening with the compliance with our alcohol beverage policy, that, that I could be comfortable with moving forward. So that being the case, I, I do want to make a motion to recommend to a council to request approval for the conditional use permit, application number U-16-003, to operate group cooking classes with beer and wine service and alternating use of parking on property zone C2, APN 510-45-014. I can make the finding that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of CEQA. I can make the findings for the conditional use permit as required by Section 29-20-190 of the town code. The deciding body may grant a conditional use permit if it finds that the proposed use of the property is essential or desirable to the public's convenience or welfare because it provides a cooking school service to Los Gatos residents. The proposed, proposed use will not impair the integrity and character of the zone because it's a commercial use and would be located in a commercial zone. The proposed use would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare. And the conditions regarding the parking agreement, operating hours, and service of alcoholic beverages placed on the permit would maintain the welfare of the community. The proposed use of the property is in harmony with the various elements or objectives with the general plan and the purposes of the town code. I can also make the required finding for the redevelopment plan for the central Los Gatos redevelopment project area, that the proposed project is consistent with the redevelopment plan for the central Los Gatos redevelopment project area, and that the project is designated commercial and it falls within general commercial uses. I would like to add a couple of, some of the conditions that, that Commissioner Hudes suggested. For example, the ones that I thought were important would be to add a condition that the applicant should take the responsibility of informing customers of alternate parking arrangements, that staff must be present when there's a non-employees leading a cooking class, that there be no alcohol at, at events that include children, and that I, I thought that Commissioner Hudes' suggestion of eliminating the, the 19-1 and the 34-2 on the chart on Exhibit 5 were worth incorporating as well. So that's my motion.
We have a second? We do not have a second. Motion fails. Commissioner Hudes?
Let me try to take it a step further. I agree with the motion that was made previously, but I would add to that motion that we would require the landlord to have agreement for off-site parking, that there would be a three-month, six-month, and annual review, and that childcare would be an excluded use, and that the numbers mentioned in the table would be maximum numbers in the conditional use permit.
All right. The town attorney would like to step in?
Thank you. With regard to the off-site agreement with the toll house, I would inform or, or comment that the conditional use permit that is before us does not contemplate or require that Mr. Tate commit to parking at the Toll House Hotel. Mr. Tate's business or, or property comes with nine-plus parking spots. It is only after the technical close of his business that six of those are allocated to Caccini Bambini. If those six spots were, say, allocated during the day, then the commission might be interested in understanding the provision for off-site parking. But it is not, that is not a feature of what's before us, therefore, I don't think it's a legally tenable requirement to have him prove that he has a parking agreement with Toll House. I think it was being offered as sort of a plum, as if to say, look, I don't even park there at all. But the fact of the matter is that all that's before us is there are nine-plus spots, and after the close of business, six are allocated to Caccini Bambini, which allows for three for the nighttime possibility of nighttime work and, and overtime work. So I, I'm not sure that, I, I would suggest that that's not really a legally tenable requirement.
Well, would it, would it be, and we can go back to the record, if the applicant has stated that he has such an agreement in place?
You, you can direct that he prove it, but it's not, this CUP isn't contingent on that agreement. It wasn't contemplated in the grant, in, in this, in this project. So it's not, I would say there's not a nexus between making him prove it and, and this, this particular application. With regard to the childcare facility, I would suggest that there's very... With regard to the childcare facility, I would suggest that there's very strict and specific state laws regarding childcare facilities. If the commission registered in having, directing staff to show that, you know, you could pass that on. If you wished to pass this on to council with any kind of recommendation, you could ask for a definition of that to see whether this business falls into a childcare facility. My relatively informed but not very researched opinion is that it just does not fall into the state requirements as a childcare facility, so they're not going to need to meet certain of those criteria. But you could ask for a definition, I suppose, to satisfy yourself that it doesn't constitute a childcare facility.
My concern is about the parents' night out, which is where children are dropped off for childcare, not for cooking classes.
I'm not sure that's accurate. I think that they're dropped off for classes that, in effect, serve as childcare while a parent goes to dinner, but they are a class. They're not just running loose.
Then I don't see why that has to be differentiated at all in the use permit. I don't think we should even address that because whether it's day or night, there are going to be situations where children are dropped off to do the class. So, I would prefer to remove the parents' night out if it's anywhere in the application.
And so, if we can get clarification, your, part of your motion is that they not be permitted to do parents' night out?
Correct.
Which would be also meaning that you don't want them to do any child classes where a child can be dropped off?
No. What I'm saying is when there's not a class where it's just purely childcare.
So, I think in the applicant's letter, they say that parents' night out are classes. So, classes will be performed. I think I understand you're saying that it has to be in conjunction with a class. It cannot just be having the children dropped off.
Correct. And I'd be open to your suggesting language to address that issue.
Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Erickson.
To the town attorney, in your discussion with Commissioner Hudes, you went from six to nine on the three spots. Did you say that the business would not have to be closed?
I did not say that. I said that the way our code is written, it allows for alternating parking with businesses that have distinct closures, like at a bank.
So, we're back to 5:30 closed, closed on weekends.
Correct. But it's not a complete allocation of all nine spots.
See, I'm going to try to support the motion with one addition. But however we get it to town council, that needs to be resolved, that the applicants and landlords all understand what allocating spots means and that they can live with that and abide by that. It seems to me to be an onerous condition, and there might be another way around it. But if you're going to commit to it, then you've got to commit to it. But it just seems to me to be very, very difficult to commit to that. To the maker of the motion, I wonder if you'd be willing to add to your motion staff's comment that no alcohol service be...
We don't have a second yet. I believe we have to have a second before we add to the motion? Or am I mistaken?
I'm in discussion period here.
Okay. Okay.
I'm discussing with...
Go ahead.
To the maker of the motion, I'm discussing. Would you also include the staff recommendation that no alcohol service be permitted in the drop-off space or the drop-in space? As that essentially violates the alcohol policy, which says alcohol shall not be served unless there's a meal served as well. And it's been discussed that cupcakes or whatever is going on in the drop-in spaces that, you know, no way constitutes a meal.
So, I need to be educated a little bit on that point because I'm not in favor of not allowing alcohol in that particular room in the business. To me, that is a natural room to be used for wine to be served with dinner when people are, when adults are preparing dinner and then go in and sit down. So, I don't think that makes as much sense. But what I, where I need to be educated is how the alcohol policy deals with food, and does it say "meal" or does it say "food"?
Well, at the risk of...
I'm just trying to get a response from staff on that.
Pretending to be an educator. A meal is not popcorns, not shrimp goulash, not chips, not dips, but a meal is a meal. And in the drop-off place, there's not going to be any meals served. There's going to be cupcakes decorated or whatever the applicant said in his letter. And I'm strongly opposed to alcohol service unless there's a meal. Moreover, as you get to it, there's no other place in town that serves beer and wine unless it's a restaurant. So, we're already going down a new corridor, if not a slippery slope, in assigning that permit to this service, which I'm, you know, you want to review it every three and six months. I think that's prudent. And we have space to make that recommendation to council, but I don't think we have any space to recommend a violation of the alcohol policy.
I'm going to allow our community development director to step in here, Mr. Paulson. Would you like to comment?
Yeah, just to get back to Commissioner Hudes' original question. Actually, I think the way that the condition is currently worded, which is Condition Number Nine of Exhibit Three, actually meets your intent. To Vice Chair Kane, I don't think Commissioner Hudes is saying that you should be having beer and wine with cupcakes, but the applicant, I think during their public testimony, stated as Mr. Hudes did, that that would be an ideal place to put tables up. After you're done cooking, you go and you eat your meal, and you could have wine. So, this limits the service of beer and wine as permitted only with meals. And so, regardless of location, that, I think, covers at least what Commissioner Hudes is looking for, and then it further defines, you know, what a meal is.
But that would still support staff's recommendation that beer and wine not be served in the drop-in zone for drop-ins to decorate a cupcake. It would be for people having a meal which they brought from the main room.
Correct.
Okay.
And to be clear, my motion does not include language about the space, the drop-in zone, but it does include Item Nine, which says the service of beer and wine is permitted only with meals, and then goes on from there.
Are we clear on that? Vice Chair Kane? All right. Do we have a second? Motion fails. Commissioner Erick...
Wait, whoa, let me go. I'm sorry. I didn't want to be talking all night long, but I'll second the motion. We're making a recommendation to town council. We're not setting policy. We're not agreeing. We're not denying. We're sending a recommendation to town council, and I'm just one voice, but I think what Commissioner Hudes has come up with is reasonably prudent. So, I'll second the motion.
All right. We have discussion. We have, Commissioner Erickson's got his hand up.
So, I think I know what the motion is, but I'm not sure. But I would make some observations with respect to Commissioner Hudes' concern about parents' night out. In the letter from the applicant, parents' night out is actually in the section of kids' classes. So, I think it's pretty clear that the intent of the applicant is to, it's a type of kids' class. It's not a separate category in their letter that's part of their, supportive of their application. So, I think that seems to me to be not an issue. I guess if, and so that's just informational from my perspective. If the motion, and I'm saying, I think the motion still includes, would include something that would explicitly exclude childcare facility. If that's the case, I couldn't support the motion because we would have to have a limitless number of exclusions. So, it seems like to me, we specify use. We don't specify what are not uses. So, I couldn't support a motion that would exclude a particular use, which isn't, that doesn't seem to be any logic to that. And then, in a, it's not clear to me what the reason for excluding, and what we gain from excluding the 19-1 and 34-2 in the chart is, as a matter of fact, the applicant used an example of 19-1, a business association, or as an example, I believe, in his testimony, as an example of where they might do that, while it wasn't usual, but they might do that. I could see that happening. I could see them, for example, hosting a chamber, a limited chamber event where they wouldn't need but one staff person there. So, I'm not sure what that gains us by eliminating that. And I'm not sure what it gains us by the 34-2, given that they might, I mean, I can't imagine I'm going to have a viable business, and I'd have too many people there that I couldn't provide good quality service to. So, I guess I would have to respect their, way they run their business. But I would support the intent of Commissioner Hudes as including the chart in that Exhibit Five, as the chart, as greater clarification of what is Condition Six and Seven, where there are not numbers, where there are not maximums. So, I think it's, we can, I would think there would be ways that one could incorporate an appropriate Exhibit Five as the way to express what the limitations, what the boundaries are. Because I'm a bit uncomfortable with the language that's in the use permits myself now because it's, while I understand you could get to it from the languages in there, I just think it's better to be very explicit about that. My other observation is I think the language, and I would, I have an opinion about this, but I would also defer to Jocelyn and to Joel on this, that while there was testimony in response to a question that I asked, that people that drop in would be seen by the applicant as students, assuming that these, that they're very successful with their business and they're here 15 years from now or something, and they're thriving, and we think it's the best addition to that end of downtown ever or something. In history, history then gets lost sometimes. So, I would suggest that we might use the term instructors and staff or slash staff so it's clear because there could be staff there that weren't technically instructors at a time that might need to be there, and that would be clearer. And students and customers or some language like that because the drop-in situation, if I understand how they, what they contemplate for that and actually have visited their place in the past, I don't know that those are, that I would consider drop-in people as students necessarily in the way that there's an explicit class going on. So, I would be interested in those kind of things. And then, I do have a question for Mr. Paulson since one of his three departments now is the compliance department. So, it's still, while I'm not opposed to reviews, I guess to be sure that people are complying with the conditional use permit, and I'm not saying we shouldn't ever ensure that people are responsible for it, but it's not clear if, if I understood the maker of the motion, some of it was about to be sure that parking is working out okay. Well, I'm not sure how I measure that it's not working out okay. The town has a set of standards that they use to allocate parking spaces, and as long as they're doing that, unless they're not egregiously saying, you know, "We don't want people to come here and go to our classes unless they come one in a car," and they create kinds of problems, you know, I mean, something like that. I'm not sure how we would effectively enforce or be sure they're complying with, in fact, the code.
So, I think generally, we would look, obviously, that's close to a residential neighborhood, Broadway area. The citizens there are very engaged, and so if things become challenging from a parking perspective, we would look to, you know, at that three, six, nine year, whatever those time periods are, we would look to code compliance, see how many complaints they and/or other staff had received relating to any of those issues, whether it's noise or parking.
Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. And I appreciate the comments, and let me see if I can address them maybe in reverse order. So, with regard to the review, my intention was to ask that the review be done such that the applicant is in compliance with the conditional use permit and not go beyond that review. With regard to the definition of students and staff and customers and, I'm sorry, customers and students and instructors and staff, I agree with that completely. I sort of ran out of time to say that when I was describing it myself, so I would suggest we use that wording that you've suggested. With regard to the maximums in the table, I went back to the testimony of the applicant, and I am concerned about the intensity that the project will generate. And so, if the applicant says that it's viable to run this at 31 and three, then that's what I think the maximum should be rather than something above that that was in their initial request. So, I would prefer to stay with the 31 and three as the top number and the 16 and two as the top number, just because I think it makes sense in terms of having at least some impact on the intensity. And then, with regard to the first point about excluding childcare use, yeah, I think I made that in my initial comments, but that was not part of my motion. My motion was to have staff address the issue about whether, really, whether there was a question of parents' night out would be simply childcare, and it was clarified to me that it included classes. And so, I'm satisfied with that, and I don't think we need any language with regard to that first point.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kane?
Commissioner Hudes, referring to Exhibit Five, those top two lines that you made reference to are simply an extension of the ratio of how many spaces are required and permitted. He's not committing to 19-1 or 34-2, but that's what he could have under the parking ratios. Whether or not they ever get used, it's simply an example of what he could have, I think.
Well, I also clarified that those numbers would be a maximum, whereas the application does not specify...
So, you want to eliminate those two line items?
I would take the first line item off the table on both tables.
Right. That's what I meant. I'm not sure how you do that under the ratios, it's simple mathematics.
Well, you end up with 31 and three is 36, I'm sorry, is 34, and 28 and four, which is the next one down, is only 32.
All right. We're making a recommendation. I'm okay with that.
It's a smaller number, and that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion before I call the question? Commissioner Erickson?
It would be helpful to me if the staff could actually review the motion and clarify exactly what the motion is that we're voting on because it's, I want to be, I want to be sure that I'm being an informed voter.
Well, I'll start, and then anyone can fill in. Typically, what we will do is just review the videotape so we make sure we don't miss anything. And even following this conversation, we'll do that as well. And so, I think we have a motion from Commissioner Hudes to incorporate the elements from Ms. Hanson's, Commissioner Hanson's original motion, which was staff present when there are non-employee instructors present, no alcohol during kids' events, that the landlord enter into agreement with Toll House, that there be a review at the 369 month and one year from when the business starts, begins operation, reviews, that the applicants will inform customers of parking options in town, that the maximums become the 16 students and two instructors as a maximum for the daytime use, and that the 31 students and three instructors be the maximum at the evening and a weekend timeframe, that... 369. And then, we have also, we are going to add the language from Commissioner Erickson on the instructors slash staff and students slash customers. We are going to... We are going to also, I think that's the last one that I have on my list.
With regard to the maximums, it would be to include that full table, that gets into the ratios as well.
Adding a reference to that chart?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'm not sure I'm clear about the additional, the idea of the agreement. We already have a copy of the letter from the landlord and the tenant saying that there's an agreement to allocate six of the parking spots, so I'm not sure what the additional expectation would be. And then I was thinking of our attorney's comments, that this could significantly delay the process, because it essentially would have to be another CUP for the Toll House. So I'm kind of uncomfortable with that, I just wanted to make sure I understood the intent and what it really meant.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a technical issue that I would prefer staff to recommend how to deal with that. I think I've heard some different opinions on it. I think that it's important, but I don't think that creating a legal nightmare is what we're trying to do here, so.
So would you be taking that off of your addition to the motion? Taking that, it's a recommendation that it should be looked at by council?
Yeah, I think it's simpler to take that off for now, and if staff, you know, thinks about it before it goes to council, and, you know, wants to make a suggested change, then that would be their purview to make a suggestion.
Commissioner Erickson?
So one, I think I've got it, except one clarification. So the restriction on no alcohol at kids' events, quote unquote, that was Joel's wording, does that mean events which are exclusively children's events, events at which there are, I assume the intent of that would be events at which there are minors? Or to exclude, so any event where there's a minor, or only, or events at which there were only minors? Those are two different things.
Yeah, it was my intention, it was my intention that alcohol not be served during children's events, and, you know, that means when children are present. So it would be permissible on the converse to serve alcohol when it's an adult-only event.
So I would just, thank you for that clarification, just so everyone understands that. I think you end up with, you know, the family getting together, the family dinner, which may have all ages down to kids. So I understand your motion, but just, so folks understand that.
I'm going to add to the discussion here. So I have concern with the parking. I also have concern with the intensification of alcohol licenses in our downtown. However, I'm amenable to the overall concept of a cooking school. I think this is something new that will add to family fun and commercial vitality in the downtown, and I believe it would support other businesses as well as expand resident-oriented services. So I would be supporting the motion. So Commissioner Erickson?
Just so that I clarify, when we take the vote, that I'm going to not support the motion, I don't think it's necessary to preclude alcohol service at events where there are adults and children present. That's, this, in my sense is, although I understand this, the use isn't being specified as a restaurant. We're using the logic of a restaurant for the way we interpreting the alcohol beverage thing, and we don't preclude restaurants from having alcohol, from serving alcohol where they have minors present. So I can't support it on that basis. And then I don't feel the necessity to eliminate the two lines that Commissioner Hudes wants to eliminate off of exhibit number five in that chart.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, with regard to the children and alcohol, I guess the situation I was trying to prevent was not the family dinner where there were adults and children, it was where there was a class, and there were adults drinking off on the side. And so if there's a way to maybe clarify that, and that's why I use the term children's events, that alcohol will not be served during children's events, maybe we can modify that language to address that second issue.
All right. Vice Chair Kane?
I want to stress, this is a recommendation. It's not a denial, or an approval, or a pyramid, or something that's going to live for seven, it could live for a week until it gets to town council. You know, the gist of the motion being made is kids in bars. We don't want kids in bars. People go to a restaurant, they sit down, they have a glass, this isn't a restaurant. So it's uncharted waters, and it's a recommendation, and the intent is well-intended, that children not be present when alcohol's being served. It's not a restaurant. So with that recommendation, Commissioner Erickson, I think we're doing our job of giving a responsible guidance recommendation to town council. They've got to decide this thing. I think we're giving them a multi-pronged recommendation, a lot of good things to think about. This is not a deciding body.
Well, I'm going to step in here. Commissioner Erickson does have a right to disagree and voice his opinion, and after we hear from him, I'd really like to call a question. Commissioner Erickson?
Yeah, after eight years on the planning commission, I don't need to be reminded by another commissioner that I understand that we're making a recommendation to the town council, and that the whole eight years I've been on the planning commission, it's been clear to me that we can only make recommendations where the alcohol beverage service policy of the town is a part of the application. So, that being said, I don't think that it is an even close interpretation when you use the word bar to describe this. It's not even close to a bar. It may not be a restaurant, but it's certainly closer to a restaurant than it is to a bar.
All right. Commissioner Erickson, I think we all can agree that we can disagree at times, and I think it's really time to call the question here, so. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. You want to try that again? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Commissioner Erickson opposed, passes, four to one. All right, we have one item after this. We can either take a break or move forward after I talk about appeal rights here. So Mr. Paulson, since this is just a recommendation to the town council, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are not any appeal rights for this item.
Thank you. All right, all right, we are going to take a break. We'll come back in five minutes. All right, we are resuming the meeting after our break, and we are moving to item number four, 101, 111, and 121 Albright Way, Architecture and Site Application S-16-013, requesting approval to construct two elevated pedestrian bridges connecting the third levels of buildings two and three, and three and four on property-zoned Albright specific plan, APN 424-31-068, 424-32-079, and 424-32-082. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Ms. Puga, we're ready for you again with a staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. The applicant is proposing to construct an elevated pedestrian bridge between buildings two and three. Building two is currently completed and occupied while building three is still under construction. The pedestrian bridge is proposed to be 1,020 square feet and connect to the third level of the buildings. The applicant is also proposing to construct an elevated pedestrian bridge between buildings three and four, which are both currently under construction. The pedestrian bridge is proposed to be 924 square feet and also connect to the third floor levels. The proposed pedestrian bridges will have a slightly different design than the existing bridge connecting buildings one and two, due to functional reasons. However, the proposed bridge will maintain the same wood soffit roofing material and glass type as the existing bridge. The proposed bridges were reviewed by the town's consulting architect, who stated that the connecting walkways are light and airy and well-elevated to allow the campus open space to flow smoothly between the structures. The project complies with the general plan and Albright specific plan. The proposed pedestrian bridges will have the same high-quality architectural style and materials as the buildings and bridge that have been approved. Staff recommends that the planning commission take the actions outlined in the staff report, and forward a recommendation of approval to the town council for the proposed project. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puga. Vice Chair Kane?
Thank you, Ms. Puga. On page six of the staff report, on community benefit, if the, regardless of our recommendation, if town council was to approve this application, the dollar per square foot for the bridges, given their, that's not a very, I mean, that's a reasonably nominal amount, right? Given the fact that the bridges are small.
So I can't speak to how that amount came to. I wasn't privy, and the director can provide that information, but it's what the settlement agreement agreed upon, and that's what staff would recommend.
But I mean, the $1 per square foot adds up to a couple hundred dollars.
Correct. So you add the two amounts, the 1,020 square feet and the 924 square feet.
It's not a significant amount. But in any event, where does that money go?
I'll provide that interpretation for the director.
So that money goes into a fund, and there's settlement agreement money, and then there's other community benefit that was part of the original plan development and the specific plan. I don't have the particulars in front of me as to what it goes to. There is some that is specifically tied to traffic circulation improvements in the area, and then there is another set that actually doesn't have any linkage. So I do not know where that has been allocated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
Go ahead. Just two questions. The allowable square footage for bridges, is that included in the 485,000, or is there 4,000 additional square footage that's allowed?
So that's a separate calculation. So if you go to page four of exhibit six, under D, pedestrian bridges, it states that there may be an application for three proposed elevated walkways that shall not exceed 4,000 square feet in the aggregate.
Okay, but it wasn't clear, is that in addition to the 485, or is that inclusive?
That's separate.
It's in addition.
Okay. And then the other question was, we're at a point on a project that was very contentious and took a lot of twists and turns, and we're being asked for a recommendation on the Arkansas site application. What's the track record of the developer and the contractor with regard to this project to date? Have they been in compliance, or have there been challenges in terms of their compliance in the development?
I can speak only to the elevated pedestrian bridges. I haven't been involved in the construction of the buildings. The director has been processing those applications and can speak further.
And so obviously, this is a very large project, and I don't know if there have been any citations issued for any violations. Obviously, we receive phone calls when subcontractors or steel deliveries come too early, and so then we work with the contractor to remedy those issues. You know, some of the trees have died that were intended to be saved, and so we work through those issues as we would with any other project.
So it's not out of the norm, it's pretty much as any other project would go?
It is, just on a different scale from what the town typically sees.
Right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, did you have your hand up?
I had a question about the square footage that was similar to the question that Commissioner Hudes asked.
All right, thank you. I have a question, and are you aware of any complaints with light pollution from the current bridge that connects building one and two? Have you had any complaints, especially from the Charter Oaks residents?
I have not received any complaints.
Thank you.
We have not received any complaints about the lighting from the pedestrian bridge.
Thank you. All right. We will now open the public testimony of the public hearing, and allow the applicant and their team, which I only see one person, to address the commission. So I will be calling the team, which might be James Abada?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to need a speaker card from you. Thank you, sir.
So my name is James Abada, and I'm representing the project architect. Jocelyn gave a pretty good explanation of the project. Something I'd like to kind of go back and reinforce is that the purpose of the bridges is really, or the walkways, is to improve site circulation and connectivity between the buildings, preventing employees from having to keep going outside and upstairs. We also, as she's mentioned, have an existing bridge that connects buildings one and two, same purpose, the design is very similar. Some site restraints may just change some of the materials and the proportions, but I think that's, I mean, I think everything's kind of covered.
Does that, is that the end of your testimony?
I think so, yeah.
Wow, that was quick, okay. Do commissioners have any questions for you? Seeing none? All right, you can sit down now, thank you. I'm going to call Lee Quintana as I open up the public portion of the hearing, open to the public, so Ms. Quintana.
I'm going to be equally as brief. I'm not going to comment on the bridges, per se, but in your plan set, on sheet A, 4.3, photo two.
I'm sorry.
Miss Quintana, when you have that working, can you tell us the sheet that we should be referring to again?
Okay, yeah, it's A, 4.3, photo two.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all I wanted to comment on is that I don't understand what all of this is. It's not there, and I'm just curious about why it is on this photo, because if it's not there, you can see all the parking spaces, so. That's all I wanted to say.
Any questions for Ms. Quintana? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to invite Abada back up to the podium. You have five more minutes to speak to us, if you'd like. Would you like to... Would you like to speak to us, just come up to the podium to see if we have a question for you, because we may? And we do. All right. Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, I was struggling a little with the purpose of these photo simulations, and what was simulated and what was, what was real. Could you address that point about photo number two and what your intention is to illustrate in that?
Yes. So, I think--
Maybe we could, maybe we could see that again. Thank you.
So, the, the modeling of the building is the actual height of the building above grade, and the intention of the trees, so the, the parking lot is planted with trees. This would represent about 15, 20-year growth. So, what you see now is they're young trees, and as they kind of fill in, they would start to obscure the view of the, of the buildings.
So, it's, the trees are simulated, or the building is there, correct?
They're all, this is all, this was done before the buildings were constructed. So, this is a simulation of the proposed project as a whole. So, trees and building are simulated.
So, Mr. Abeta, if you could speak to the grassy-looking elements, I don't know that those are there. There is some landscaping adjacent to the Creek Trail. I just don't know if it looks like that.
Probably not. I would say that they, that the low-line shrubs may not be there. What's there is existing is probably part of the creek property.
And maybe what we can do, we have the photo sims, and as this moves forward to the council, maybe we can get an actual photo of what's out there currently.
That would be helpful. Commissioner Erickson.
The photo under consideration, our discussion, does it have any relevance to the bridges? In your opinion?
In my opinion? In my opinion, no.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Abeta? Seeing none? You can sit down. Thank you. All right. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have any questions, comments? Commissioner Erickson.
I will move to recommend to the town council approval of architectural site application eight, all right, S-16-013, subject to the conditions in Exhibit three and the development plans in Exhibit seven. That is requesting approval to construct two elevated pedestrian bridges connecting the third levels of buildings two and three, and buildings three and four on the property controlled by the Albright Way specific plan. And I can make the findings to support the motion that the potential environmental impacts of the proposed bridges are within the scope of environmental impacts analyzed in the Albright Office Park Environmental Impact Report, and none of the events listed in the Public Resources Code, Section 21166, have occurred accordingly. Then, one would conclude that no further CEQA process is required to, within conjunction with this architectural site application. I can make the finding that the project complies with the general plan. I can make the finding that the project complies with Albright specific plan, and make the other required considerations as required by Section 29.20.150 of the Town Code for granting approval of an architectural site application.
We have a second. Commissioner Hudes.
I would second the motion, and I would also request the staff that they update the photos in providing this to town council.
Vice Chair Kane, you had your hand up.
I was going to second the motion.
I'm sorry. His hand went up first.
He got me.
Okay. Sorry. All right. So, any discussion? I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, again, since this is a recommendation to town council, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are not. Thank you.
All right. Do you have a report for us this evening, Mr. Paulson?
Sure. So, last week, the town council met and considered two items that were considered by the planning commission. One was at 360 Bella Vista that the planning commission approved the subdivision of two lots of, but denied the architecture and site applications. The town council considered those two applications and denied the appeal, and remanded the applications back to the planning commission with the direction that the homes be smaller and compatible with the neighborhood, generally. The second matter was the Union Avenue matter, which was the three-lot subdivision and three new homes at the corner of Blossom Hill Road and Union Avenue. With that item, the town council granted the appeal and approved the subdivision and the architecture and site applications for those homes. They did not find that the commission erred. They found that there was a policy or issue that was the discretion of the town council in making that action, and they thanked the commission on both items for the work that they did on both of those applications.
Vice Chair Kane.
And part of their support for the application, I don't think, was before us, and that included very significant improvements to the traffic flow from Blossom Hill to Union.
That's correct.
And that's, and that those improvements be funded by the developer. Is that correct?
That is correct. As part of the application, yes.
Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question about, I, I watched the entire hearing on those two items. When the Bella Vista application was remanded back to, to the planning commission, I don't know if the other commissioners were aware, but the, the applicant had come back and submitted a revised proposal subsequent to our planning commission meeting, but prior to the town council hearing, and it did include smaller homes. In Mayor Specter's comments in remanding it back to the planning commission, she didn't specify that the, the houses had to be smaller than what was submitted to them and not to us. So, I was wondering if we could get clarification before that, because I think that'll be a very big issue when it does come back to us, is exactly how much smaller that need to be, because they, the applicant felt that they had made them a smaller, but it wasn't clear when it was remanded back to us that it had to be smaller than that. I think it was implied, but it wasn't specifically stated.
Well, it wasn't clear, and it wasn't stated, and I don't know that they ever state that it has to be smaller. There was two scenarios, as I recall, and I'm going from memory here, but one of the houses got down to a similar square footage of the largest house in the neighborhood, and the other one still exceeded it. So, obviously, those are, you know, issues for the one that still exceeds the largest house is always generally a challenge for staff and has, you know, been a challenge on some items for planning commission. So, smaller, I don't even know that they said, you know, smaller could also relate to the mass and scale and neighborhood compatibility, and so there's a number of items that, that can relate to. So, when it comes back, we'll evaluate it like we would if it was a new application, and we'll make our recommendation, and the planning commission will deliberate and make a decision on those.
Vice Chair Kane.
For what it's worth, I watched it live as it was occurring, and I was surprised that they said that. They said smaller, and they said compatible with the neighborhood. I think we have some good guidelines on that, but it wouldn't hurt to read the transcript or see what they send back to us when we get the staff report.
I mean, the only reason I asked the question was just because they had submitted the second proposal, and, and so, since it was an appeal of our decision, you know, I don't know to what extent the second proposal was factored into that.
And we'll, we'll look back at that. I, I don't remember the exact comment, but I think that came up between the mayor and vice mayor as to, you know, what about remanding it? You know, they have this interim version. I just can't remember what the conclusion was. So, we will look at that when we come forward.
Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah. I also watched the tape, and I was a little confused, but it was clear to me that they were rejecting it because it was too big, and even that second iteration was too big. My suggestion to staff is that we see, you know, A, B, and C when it comes back to us so that we can see how it's changed in some kind of simple way, so we can, we can evaluate whether they follow direction of council, and I'll go back and listen again, but it'd be clear, it'd be helpful to see a side-by-side comparison of the three.
So, some of those things we can compare from a square footage, FAR height scenario from a compatibility standpoint. We can speak with the applicant and see if they're willing to, you know, do kind of an outline of the first proposal from a mass and scale, you know, the second proposal, which frankly, I don't think really changed all that much from the street view, and then the, whatever the latest proposal is. But we can make that request. I can't guarantee that will happen, but obviously, that would be beneficial information for them to provide.
So, I have a general question for you. Is it appropriate for an applicant to revise his application between a planning commission decision and going up to count, to a town council appeal? It seems to me that the council should be seeing the same thing that we saw. Is it appropriate for applicants to do that?
So, the council sees both. There is a prohibition on them submitting additional information between planning commission and council, and frankly, there's actually a specific, one of the findings, if they decide to grant an appeal, one of those findings is potentially that new information that was, was submitted to the council, and so then they take that into consideration, and because there have been ones where new information has been provided, and they've granted the appeal. So, it's a case-by-case basis, but it's not prohibited, and it's additional information that they can provide to the council.
It just seems that anyone could shoot big and then just kind of modify it just a little bit, so.
Yeah, I think it, you have to look at it case by case, and, you know, this was a, was a reduction, but it wasn't that big of a reduction. So, I think if you looked at a comparison, you, you would see that, and you can actually go to the staff report, and you can get the just raw numbers of what that is. But they also receive what the planning commission originally received. That becomes another attachment, their revised proposal.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners and staff, thank you as always for your time and hard work. Do any of the commissioners have an, an item to bring forward at this time? If not, this meeting is adjourned.